This evening's meeting is a hybrid. Council is back in the dais and the public is here via Zoom. Chamber is currently closed to the public with the exception of special presentations and public communications. And it's really good to be back at the dais. We are going to start with the invocation that's going to be led by Pastor Wes Harding of the Bridge Church who's here on Zoom. And that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Giroux. So if we could all please rise. Hold on Wes, we can't hear you yet, sir. Pastor Harding, can you hear us? Hold on, we have some technical difficulties.
I do not. I do not. Oh, unmute.
Pastor Harding, can you hear us?
Ah, yes, I can hear you now, thank you.
Excellent, we can hear you as well. And if you would, please lead us in the invocation.
I would love to. Let's bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for being in the midst of this community. Your blessing of protection and care is evident in our relatively peaceful lives. Thank you for bringing these individuals together tonight and guiding our community into greater health and wellbeing. Help us to work together for the common good. Thank you for the leadership in this community. Thank you for those who serve, those who protect, those who lead, and those who care for our community. We are so grateful for them as they humbly serve others. Tonight, as we meet together as a community, let us use our resources wisely. Let us represent all members of our community fairly and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants who you have put in place, we seek a blessing on the deliberations tonight and on our efforts here. May we act wisely and well. Heavenly Father, thank you and amen. ... America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Harding and thank you Councilmember Giroux. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could please do the roll call.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Nico.
Here.
Councilmember Persak.
Here.
Mayor Protan Hemantal.
Here.
And Mayor Boyle.
Here.
Okay.
Thank. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're moving on to special presentations. Following that, we'll get right into public communications. We know there are people here that would like to address the dais. So first up, we have a presentation for the LA Gilteenies. And do we have Adam? Adam, are you on Friar?
Yes, certainly am.
Adam, good to see you.
Good to be here, good to be part of the community and good to be part of a winning team in El Segundo, which the city is very known for and proud of. So thanks for having us here.
So we're so happy to have you here. It was your first season here in El Segundo, was it not, that you took home the championship?
Yeah, first, I'd say the second team in professional sports history in the U.S. with going in and they made the season and come away with a championship. So yeah, a humble little team like rugby, the third biggest sport on the planet, to have a time in El Segundo and represent L.A. and get a win was a huge honor for the club and for the community. And we're super pumped. A lot of people would have said that it was a long shot, but the guys on the call, I have the head coach, Steven Hoyle, and our captain on the call, David Dennis, both have represented their countries and their sport. And all three of us, we all knew that it was going to be a good result for us the end of the day. So we're super pumped, super proud, and also proud to be representing the city of El Segundo as well.
Excellent. And it's been great to see your team practicing at Campus El Segundo occasionally and riding through town in the pink gear, representing the brand. It's awesome. We love having you guys in town. So I've got a commendation then to read to you. Says, and it's a beautiful one. I haven't seen one like this, Adam, in quite some time. This thing's worthy of a wall, for sure. Whereas El Segundo has a strong tradition of fostering game-changing innovation and we are proud, the LA Gilteenies have chosen El Segundo as their home. And whereas in early 2021, the LA Gilteenies became the newest championship team to establish its headquarters and practice facility in the city of El Segundo, joining the L.A. Lakers, the L.A. Kings, and Premier Lacrosse League, El Segundo is truly a city of world champions. And whereas on August 1st, 2021, the LA Gilteenies became the second professional sports franchise in history to win a U.S. title in their first season. And whereas the LA Gilteenies finished the champion season with just one loss at home in an 18-4 record season. And whereas the LA Gilteenies championship win would not have happened without the hidden army behind the players and the league's combined efforts to elevate rugby union in the United States. And whereas it was a triumph that reflected everything the Gilteenies have built in L.A. and El Segundo, it should read, since starting life as an MLR club last year during the middle of a global pandemic. And whereas the Gilteenies have set the pace in the MLR all season, and they did again on rugby's biggest stage on the final day of a stellar season. I was bummed I couldn't be there, by the way. You were there, Carol? Awesome. Now therefore, the mayor and the members of the city council, the city of El Segundo, California hereby recognize and commend the LA Gilteenies for their tireless efforts and undying contributions to win the U.S. title in their first season. Congratulations on becoming the 2021 Major League Rugby Champions. And it's got all of our names on there. It looks great. So we're going to get a parade in town with free Gillies Lager and Gilteenies?
That's the plan.
Okay.
If you attend the Edtoberfest on September 18th, they'll be there.
Okay, yeah, Carol's saying that you guys are going to be there sponsoring the Edtoberfest for the Education Foundation?
Yep. You're going to be bringing Gillies beer?
Gillies Lager and, yeah, maybe a quick background, people don't know this, a real quick story on why, what does Gilteenies mean? I remember you describing that to me over coffee at Blue Butterfly, but can you just give a quick overview of why, what Gilteenie is and why the name?
Well, if El Segundo's best coffee is known as a butterfly, its best rugby team can easily be known as the best cocktail in town. Difference about our squad compared to many others, we've got to find a commercial reason to exist. And we're going to be built behind a cocktail which is called the Gilteenies, which would be retailing, which is all owned by Moore Drinks. Moore Drinks is a local brewery here in El Segundo. We work out of the same place in California Street. So we've got Gillies Lager, we've got the Gilteenies, we've got the Gilgroney, and we've got the Margarita, which is coming out soon as well. So we've got, which funny enough, is all owned by Adam Gilchrist, who owns F45. So we're pink, we're blue, we're proud, we're a cocktail. But there's a pink about us, which is flamboyant, that drives along electric bikes. There's a real blue color about us as well, which is the hard-working, laboring, you know, no-nonsense type of rugby team. So it really does fit the city's DNA. But we are a cocktail and you'll be able to buy them in a retail store, but hopefully our rugby brand will be more famous for the drink.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Any other words? Super impressive.
Yes, so just congratulations. It was a wonderful game. You have an amazing fan base and your team has got such energy. So it was an exciting game and we're happy to have you in town.
Right. And we sincerely appreciate the support, your time as well, Giroux, and we look forward to being around for many years to come. Appreciate the support of the city and the greatest city of Los Angeles as well. So thanks for having us.
Awesome, Adam. We'll get this plaque to you. Thank you. See you soon.
Appreciate that.
Okay, next up, we have a commendation for Skip Jones. Coach Skip Jones is coach of the El Segundo High School Girl Soccer Team, has been for a long time. We had the girls soccer team up here, I don't know when that was, June, maybe, May, when he won CIF. Skip, this is interesting because this came as a recommendation from one of your colleagues, Coach Woody, who developed lacrosse here for a long time and one of the coaches, also a member of our DEI committee. So thank you for being on, Skip. I'm going to read this one if it's okay and we'll keep this, we'll allow you an opportunity to speak too. And I don't see you, but I assume you're up there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
There you are, yeah. Oh, man, you grew out some facial hair.
I started growing this when we entered the playoffs and I've yet to shave.
Oh my gosh, it's awesome. So you're going to keep it till next year's playoffs or what's the plan?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm going to have to start braiding it by then.
I'm sure some of the girls will help with that. It looks great. Okay, I've got a commendation to read for you. And then I'd love some comments from you if you'd like. This is a commendation where it says, whereas Coach Skip Jones is the embodiment of everything El Segundo youth and high school sports coaches are meant to be, and whereas Coach Skip represents all El Segundo coaches and administrators, volunteers, past, present, and future, and whereas Skip coached in El Segundo AYSO Region 19 for 11 years, held various board positions, and started the first sprint team in 1996, and whereas Coach Skip helped form and run the El Segundo Gunners Soccer Club in 2003, where he coached for 10 years. I didn't know that. You probably worked with Glenn Reese on that one too, huh?
I very much so.
Yeah, awesome.
Yep.
Whereas Skip coached the Girls Frost Soft Team at El Segundo High School, winning or sharing eight league titles. Wow. And whereas Skip coached the Girls Varsity Team at El Segundo High from 2015 to present, winning the CIF Division 4 Championship in 2021, and was selected CIF Division 4 Coach of the Year, as well as Daily Breeze Area Coach of the Year in 2021. Now therefore, on this day, August 17th, 2021, the mayor and the members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California hereby recognize and commend Coach Skip Jones for his commitment and contributions to youth sports in El Segundo. And you have a commendation right here. And one thing I learned recently, Skip, is that you're actually commuting, you've been commuting a long way to coach this team through the whole season. So that in itself is...
Yeah, well, it wasn't quite as bad as it may sound. For the bulk of the season, I was living with my daughter in El Segundo. But in any case, thank you.
Any words about the team or the commendation?
Yeah, I would just like to, actually, I'd like to thank all the other countless volunteers in El Segundo who've worked through the years to make, or to enrich the lives of the youth in El Segundo. I know a lot of people spent a whole lot of time and energy and dedication, and I think I'd like to share this award with all those people that have got involved and done this sort of thing for the right reasons. And I also wanted to mention, on a personal note, all the girls that I've coached through the years, like 30 years now, I guess, every team and every player in some form or fashion has led me down this road to become the coach I am today, which is a far cry from the coach I, the screaming maniac I was 20 years ago. So I wanted to thank all those girls and of course, thank the city council for this award.
Thanks, Skip. We'll see you on the pitch soon. We're going to have this for you here. We'll get this to you, I'm sure. Okay?
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thanks for tuning in.
All right, take care.
Okay, we have one more. This is a recognition. This is for Teresa O'Brien. Several of us up here did the tour of Hyperion, which is fascinating. And one of the things we learned from Tim, the GM, and his, I think the second-in-command over there, was that Teresa O'Brien, who is an elderly woman in town here, she might, is she on the Hyperion Advisory Committee, Scott? Abbott attendee. They made it a point to say that because of Teresa O'Brien, they actually changed a significant part of their process in the plant to reduce odor at the plant. Like just hearing from her on a consistent, regular basis. So Teresa, I called her, I didn't think she would attend. I don't know if she's on. I'm guessing not. If she is, we'll allow an opportunity to say something, but we just wanted to say thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of all the residents of El Segundo. Teresa, thanks for all your help. All right, next up, we have the Hyperion Recovery Update. We've got Barbara Romero, who is the director and GM of L.A. City Sanitation and Staff. Scott, you want to tee this one up for us, please?
How about now? Is that better? Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the viewing public, as the mayor had mentioned, Barbara Romero, sanitation director for the city of Los Angeles Sanitation Department, which has oversight or is in charge of the Hyperion wastewater tube implant, will provide you with an overview of what happened on July 11th and in subsequent days, the recovery and cleanup effort, where we are currently and the direction they're going in. Also, council, for your information, you have a copy and we've made it available to the public. We have a number of other representatives here on this virtual meeting who are available should you have any questions. So we have a slew of folks here from the different L.A. city departments. You have staff from L.A. County Public Health Department here. They provided, they're providing a lot of oversight and work in terms of water quality and things of that nature. The AQMD, we have senior members of the AQMD, Air Quality Management District. We also have the Regional Water Quality Control Board for the L.A. region, the executive officer and her staff, they're available here. And did I leave anybody else out? No, representatives from Supervisor Janice Hahn, District 4, or District, her staff is available. And I'm sure there are others that I left out. So there's a lot of people, a lot of preparation for this item. There's no action items for you. This is informational only, and at the city council's request, you wanted to update the community, and that's what this is. So Ms. Romero will provide...
Scott, before, just from a protocol standpoint, there are probably people outside, do we have the monitors set up where they can actually, okay, so...
We do.
For any of the public that want to speak, we're definitely going to allow you the opportunity to speak. We also have received a lot of written communication, all of us. So once Hyperion and the L.A. city staff have an opportunity to present, then we'll go into public comments after that.
That's correct. Sorry for my long-winded comments, I was about to say that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Romero and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Everyone, I just need the PowerPoint to be set up so we can start our presentation. Cam, do you have access? There you go. Great. So thank you Mayor Boils and city council members for the opportunity to address you today in this critical public health, safety, and environmental issue. Sanitation takes our role as operators of the largest water reclamation plant in the country extremely seriously, as we do our role as our service providers, environmental stewards, and more importantly, as good neighbors. And neighbors we have been since the plant originally opened as a wastewater processing facility back in the 20s. Since there, here at the beach, El Segundo has developed as a city. Hyperion expanded and upgraded our technologies. We've all, a lot of us raised families and have collaborated on best practices. It's been meetings like this, one, and those are at our citizens forum, that we have learned to be better neighbors. And for that, we are very grateful. We fully realize that this has been a challenging experience for all of us involved, from elected officials seeking answers, to plant employees engaging prevention, mitigation, and cleanup, and for the residents and business owners in El Segundo who have been subjected to lingering odors for the past several weeks. Today, we'll provide you with a quick update regarding the scope of the incident, how we responded immediately, and what we're continuing to do, and really what we plan to do in the future to prevent this from ever happening again. Thankfully, we're on the road to recovery and you have my personal commitment that we will use this incident to improve and update our processes and our protocols moving forward. For first, we really need to identify the cause of the emergency and get this facility back to 100%. But for now, we'll continue our assistance program by providing, by continuing to provide the reimbursements for hotel stays and air conditioning and purification systems until we made substantial progress with the facility, which we hope will happen really by the end of the month. Next slide, please. So to get our presentation started, let me just begin with the facility boundaries. As you can see, the plant is physically located in the city of Los Angeles with just a sliver in the city of El Segundo. But rest assured, council members, mayor, and residents of El Segundo, that our city council, our controller, and our oversight body of the Board of Public Works are holding us accountable for the incident, including all the regulating agencies that you'll hear more from on my team. Next slide, please. The plant serves over 4 million people in the city of Los Angeles, but also processes the waste of 700,000 residents in 29 contract cities and agencies such as Culver City, Beverly Hills, and El Segundo. These sewer lines within the city of L.A. just alone are 6700 miles, which is about 200, two and a half times miles from L.A. to New York. So that's a lot of miles that we are overseeing at this point. Now, I'd just like to turn it over to Tim DeFeta, our Hyperion Executive Plant Manager, to really provide you with more operational details about the plan and what happened on July 11th. Tim?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Romero. Next slide. Okay, thank you. So the slide that you're looking at gives you an overview of the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant. And so for those of you that have been on site, we are at the intersection of Imperial Highway and Vista Del Mar. And the place where the whole incident started is right in the middle of the slide that you're looking at, which is towards the top of the slide that you're looking at, which is the Headworks Bar Screen Facility. Next slide, please, ma'am. So on the afternoon of July 11th, past midday, more or less closer to 1:00 p.m., we began experiencing problems in our Headworks Facility. So to give you a sense of what the Headworks Facility is, this is the facility and the plant where the 6700 miles of sewer that Ms. Romero mentioned brings wastewater from all the city of L.A. and the contract agencies. And at this point is where we have a series of large screens that screen out unwanted materials that we don't want going downstream, so downstream to affect equipment and damage the processes. So we screen out all the trash, the fritto bags, the pieces of wood and things that we, you do not need, that would impact the process in a negative way. So somewhere around 3:00 p.m., between 3:30 and 4:00 p.m., with all the material that came in within that short period of time, the screens were disabled in such a manner that water began to overflow out of the Headworks Building. And somewhere around 5:00 p.m., it became untenable for staff to remain in the building because of safety concerns. And so the building was evacuated by staff. And so somewhere around 7:00 p.m., on the timeline, is when we started having overflows into the one-mile outfall that leads into the Santa Monica Bay. So prior to that happening, all the flows that were overflowing out of the Headworks, going into the roadways within the plant, going into the plant's storm drain system, we kept trying to contain those on site. So the pictures that you see, I'm going to start from the very lower right-hand corner that shows the flooding there. There you see a series of structures there that are 29, almost 22 feet by 10 foot wide, and those are the bar screens. And as you can see for that building, the entire Headworks Building at this time is already flooded. And then if you go, I want to go further left down, you see a series of flooding pictures that just shows you the extent of the flooding on that night. So roadways were inundated, buildings were inundated. And what you see in the top screen is the resulting aftermath of showing you all the overloaded bar screens. So at 7:59, after we began that overflow into the one-mile outfall, we did the notification as required by permit to Office of Emergency Services. And Office of Emergency Services notified the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the L.A. County Department of Public Health. And we also at 8:18 notified the National Response Center, which is at a federal level in terms of emergency response. So at 9:30 p.m., L.A. County Public Health arrived on site. Next slide, please, ma'am. And 4:30 a.m. in the morning was when we were able to open a bypass gate. So to give you perspective, each of the bar screens that you saw, they have a series of openings that allow water to go through but prevent trash and other materials from getting through. So we have an extra slot, which is the top right-hand picture that you see, where there's no screen. And that allows us to be able to bypass the bar screen either in case of an emergency or if there's a need to bypass the screens. And so in this instance, because of the flooded, because of the flooded Headworks and the safety concerns, we were not able to get into that building until flow began to subside somewhere around 4:30 in the morning was when staff intervened and we were able to pull a large metal plate from the slot that you see on there. And that's when the bypass began into the plant processes and then the overflow began to cease. So at 8:41 in the morning was when the overflow into the one-mile totally ceased. Next slide, please, ma'am. So what you see is a series of pictures that just demonstrate the extent of the flooding. So if you've been to Hyperion, the top right-hand picture that you see is the main roadway from the Imperial Highway Gate, which is Gate B, and leads all the way to the south end of the plant. So that, and that goes by, right by the Headworks. So you see a series of black water, you see a picture of black water all over this office. So this is, this was typical in a plant where more than half of the surface above ground was flooded and the entire plant below grade was flooded. So what you see on the left-hand top picture are the series, gateways into the series of ground tunnels that we have in the plant, 144 acres wide, but we have a series of tunnels. And that's where most of the equipment that run the facilities are housed. So all the pumps, valves, electronics that run a lot of the large structures we have in place. And so those pictures just demonstrate the flooding above ground and the flooding below ground. Next slide, please, ma'am. So as you see again, the extent of the flooding, this is midsection, almost halfway by, halfway from Imperial Highway to, if you've been to Hyperion, through Gate C, which is the entrance on Vista Del Mar. So the flooding got that far south above ground. And as you can see, there's a lake there, which is a construction site that we have for an advanced water purification facility that was inundated with about 1 million gallons. And all this had to be pumped out from various buildings and various facilities on site. Next slide, please. So to give you the extent of the damage, so best of all, starting off, it took about a week to pump out all those, the water from all those structures and facilities. So what you see here is just trying to give you a sense of the magnitude of the damage. So what you see in the flow chart here is the raw wastewater coming in on the very left top-hand corner, goes through the bar screens, and then we go to what we call primary tanks. And these are sedimentation tanks where the solids are settled and we retrieve those solids normally and send them to our digesters. And that's what we use to power the plant, 20 megawatts of power that generate electricity to run the plant. So what you see in this series of pictures is the wastewater process flow was continuing, but every equipment that you see in the yellow boxes were all damaged. And these were largely pumps that moved solids out of tanks. So the resulting effect was for three weeks, we could not move those solids out of those tanks. And that was what led to all the problems that unfortunately impacted the neighborhood and that we are very regretful about. So if you see the primary tanks and the secondary clarifiers became holding basins for three weeks, water of sludge from over 4 million people. Next slide, please. So somewhere, so a lot of the work took place within the first week of pumping out water out of facilities, then we began to do the reconstruction and the repair. So the pictures that you see right now on the top right-hand corner shows you a bypass system that was built. And we built multiple of these systems around to be able to go around pumps that we're no longer walking and then finding a way to get the flow. no longer walking, and then finding a way to get the flow and move the sludge. So the picture that you see on the bottom-left-hand corner is our Operations Manager, who's showing you the extent of the flooding above ground in the underground tunnels or galleries. And the other pictures just show you new pumps and new equipment that was bought to be able to facilitate the recovery process. So next slide, please. So in essence, that recovery process took from July 11th all the way to August 1st, and that was where the most impact occurred within the plant. And so post-August 1st is when our recovery began. So with that, I'll hand it over to our Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Tracy Medina-Midi.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Mayor Boils, honorable council members. Tracy Medina-Midi, Chief Operating Officer. So picking up where Tim left off, a couple of things that we did want to talk about was, one, what happened to the water quality. The water quality definitely was impacted. And you'll see in subsequent graphs how the quality at our five-mile effluent was affected by the fact that so much of our equipment was damaged. I do want to clarify that all of the water going through the plant after this emergency discharge out of our one-mile outfall did go through the full treatment process. But, so there was no bypass of untreated Rossi, which that went out to the ocean. But as you'll see from the graphs, definitely the water quality was affected. Also want to touch on air quality, as all of you folks in El Segundo are very much aware, air quality became an issue as a result of the impacts to our treatment and our equipment. So I'll have some graphs to talk about that. Obviously, the question that everybody first poses is what happened? What caused this problem? And it's currently under investigation. We immediately started doing some research the day after this event on that Monday, July 12th, and have started to look at our flow gauging data. We have over 200 flow gauges across our 6700 miles of sewer. And looked at that data and are still evaluating that data to see if there are any anomalies outside of what our normal records for flow indicate at each of those stations. In addition to that, we have also pinpointed over 200, a little over 200, maintenance holes that we consider to be potential areas where there could have been problems. And we are actually out there lifting those maintenance holes, putting cameras and doing it down the maintenance hole and doing a 360-degree look to see if there's any evidence there of surcharging that may have occurred, or of rags, or anything to give us hints of where this problem with all of this debris may have actually started. A lot more to go on that. We are also embarking upon a third-party review focusing in two areas. One is at the treatment plant itself, looking at if there was anything else that could have been done to mitigate this problem, what kind of improvements we can make down the line so that this doesn't happen again. And in addition to doing the third-party review at the plant itself, we have also started a third-party review in our wastewater conveyance system. So a lot of analysis and CCTV camera work is scoped out to look through our sewers and see if we can actually pinpoint what caused this problem. I did also want to mention that there has been and continues to be a significant amount of regulatory oversight. As Mr. Mitnick had mentioned, folks from the Regional Water Quality Control Board who are here tonight have been very much side by side with us down at the plant many times over the last few weeks, as well as their counterparts at the state, interviewing, investigating, and looking at the situation themselves. We were required to submit a five-day report, and then our final report, which was the 30-day report, was just turned into the regional board on Saturday. In addition, the regional board staff are going to be coming down towards the end of August to do an inspection of our conveyance system. So they'll be spending two days with us looking throughout our wastewater collection system. As you all know also, LA County was asked to do a report, their chief executive office prepared a report, it was presented to the County Board of Supervisors. They're continuing that on into a final report or more conclusive report focused quite a bit on response and how we can all coordinate and communicate and improve in that area. So for now, we've got short-term improvements in place. As Tim mentioned, a lot of work has gone on just to bring in new pumps, to do bypass piping, just to get the plant back online. We really feel like we've turned the corner. Most of those pumps and all of the critical equipment are now online. And you'll see in the subsequent graphs, I'll show you how things have improved. And then as far as long-term goes, definitely, we're expecting some recommendations and some findings through the reports that we have going on with the third-party review. So in the next slide, we'll take a look.
If I can interject, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that 30-day report, that is on our website right now, and we have hard copies on the table here for the folks who are outside who might come in here. So we have hard copies, council has a copy as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a graph of water quality. Two parameters, and this is out our five-mile outfall, this is where we've been discharging. It's our normal outfall, except for those hours that we were bypassing to the one-mile outfall. We have all since then been going out our five-mile outfall. These are two parameters that we use as our primary indicator of water quality. That is, on the blue line, total suspended solids, or TSS, and the red line being biochemical oxygen demand, BOD. You'll see on the horizontal axis there, the dates, beginning from when the incident occurred on July 11th and bringing us up to pretty current on the right side. The 45 there represents our permit requirement for both of these parameters. 45 milligrams per liter is our weekly average requirement. So you'll see on July 11th and for a good, what is it, six or seven days after that, the water quality was maintained and we were in compliance. But then you'll see a huge spike, and the water quality is significantly degraded. And as Tim was saying, the reason for this is because we were not able to pump a lot of the solids that were building up in two specific areas of our treatment process. Just repeating again what Tim had mentioned was that being the primary tanks and the secondary clarifiers, those two facilities were the places where the solids collected over the course of three weeks and started to degrade the water quality, which you see here, and as a result, create the odor problems that everyone experienced. As you see, subsequent to around, let's see, August 1st, you'll see that spike there on the right side where we had our, the worst day. After that, the water quality significantly improved, and that's because we were able to eliminate one major choke point in the treatment process. So you'll see that we are headed downward in a positive direction, and we are very hopeful that within the next week or two, we will be within our weekly average permit limit. On the next slide, what we show, what we show here is a satellite view of Hyperion Treatment Plant and El Segundo. So just to give you a sense here of where we're doing our air quality monitoring, and this is along the fence line on the eastern side of the plant. Hyperion is almost one mile long from north to south. So on the north side, we're at Imperial Highway, and then we go south nearly one mile. And along the fence line there, we have started monitoring, it's instantaneous readings for hydrogen sulfide at 11 stations. What we've highlighted here in red are the two areas that I just mentioned, our primary tanks and our clarifiers, where a lot of the odors have been most problematic. And you can kind of get a sense, those of you in the neighborhood, where those particular stations are relative to where you live. Okay, next slide. So here, this is a graph of five of the monitoring stations near our secondary clarifier. So you see on the diagram to the right here, along the right edge, the blue circles here, those are the monitoring stations that are graphed. This is on the southern side, southeast side of the treatment plant, right across from our secondary clarifiers. And you'll see the water, excuse me, the air quality was significantly bad. You can see that in the graphs of all four of the different colored lines at all four of our stations. And subsequent to that, the air quality monitoring has shown significant improvements. We have a blue horizontal line across there set at 30 parts per billion. This is the value at which air quality is considered acceptable. Not to say that you can't smell it if it's less than 30 ppb, because many people can. But we did want to give you some relative indication here of how things look. Next slide, Pam. Okay, so here are our primary clarifiers. This is the one place where we see our last main challenge. Again, you can see how the air quality was poor, was high in the beginning, now it's gotten much lower. Our most recent data is showing somewhere in the vicinity of 10 parts per billion. We're under the 30 parts per billion. We're still working to try to bring that down further as we are able to reduce that sledge blanket that has, that had built up over the course of that three-week period. We expect to see those numbers coming down even further. On the next slide, just a summary. So one thing that we do want to mention is that we do have existing four air scrubber facilities across the treatment plant. They continue to work, they have been working, it's a 24/7 operation, but with the incident that we had on July 11th, obviously, they were not able to keep up. So did want to mention that those facilities are working, though. There were some questions from the community in regard to any chemicals that we may have used as part of the cleanup process. We did use bleach inside the buildings as a disinfectant. As far as outside on the streets, that was water washed down for the cleanup process. We were also using deodorizer. This doesn't affect hydrogen sulfide readings, it's basically just a deodorizer. We have posted what's called the Material Safety Data Sheet on our website, which is a breakdown of all of the products that are in the deodorizers. According to feedback from the AQMD, there are not any constituents of concern in the deodorizer. We are only using it now in intermittent, for intermittent purposes, where some of our staff may be working in areas where they prefer to have the deodorizer in use. We will continue to evaluate the fence line monitoring, will be working with AQMD on what next steps will be on into the future in terms of air quality monitoring. So that is something that we will be addressing. Our odor hotline, for all of you who want to log in and register with us that there are odors, please give us a call. The number is 310-640-CITY, C-I-T-Y, and we will take your call and definitely follow up. Also did want to mention, some of you may have seen this in the tour, if you were able to make it to the tour of Hyperion, we do have two bio-trickling filters that are under construction now at Hyperion. These are going to make another big difference in terms of addressing odors at some of our specific areas where odor is an issue, one of that being the Headworks Building, the very, very front end of the building where our bar screens are, and the other at our intermediate pump station, which is in the middle range of the treatment plant. We're going to continue to evaluate further steps on what we can do to mitigate the odor emissions, also from our Headworks Building. We see that as an area of vulnerability there that needs to be addressed. And from there, I'm going to turn it back over to Barbara.
Actually, I'll go ahead and jump in. Hello, everyone. Lisa Maori, I'm the Chief Financial Officer at LA SAN. Our reimbursement program was something that we had to create from scratch. Normally, the city has a claims process that can be very lengthy involving multiple departments. And we knew we needed to come up with something to streamline the reimbursement process for the residents in El Segundo that were impacted by this incident. It took us 10 days to create the program, but we made sure it was retroactive back to the date of the incident so that folks could be reimbursed for actions that they took during those days. Focus is on two options for reimbursement for those who purchased air conditioning or air purification units and those that relocated to hotels. Based on feedback from your community, we extended the boundaries during the course of this program as it became apparent that the odors were more widespread than we had originally predicted. The focus of this, in order to try and expedite everything as much as possible, is on doing things online, having digital submission of receipts and other materials like that. But we are also running a paper program to accommodate those that have difficulty doing those things online. We would also very much like to thank the librarians in El Segundo that are assisting residents to be able to scan and upload their receipts so we can keep things moving. So far, we've received almost 2,900 applications. The majority of those, almost 2,400, are for air conditioning units, and we have a little over 500 that we've received for hotels. So what we've had is the initial applications from residents, which then get screened by our team to confirm that the requests are coming from an area that is covered by this program. And then the residents of El Segundo get an email with a link for them to go ahead and upload their documents. So far, we've had about 1,400 residents upload their documents. We have run two trial batches to cut checks, working through our Office of Accounting and the Controller's Office. Those have been successful, so we expect that we will be able to run larger batches through that program, moving towards cutting checks twice a week. We are, what we have been finding is, one of the things that's slowing us down is that sometimes the applications are incomplete. The two most common things that we've been finding are the W9 forms aren't signed, and also the proof of residency name doesn't match the name on the application. And so when we get submissions like that, our staff are reaching out to the residents to cure those applications, but that is something that does slow the process down. So for any El Segundo residents that are listening in tonight who haven't submitted documents to us, if you can check those two boxes, that should help us speed up the processing. For residents that have questions about the process, we do have our 24-hour Customer Care Center at 1-800-773-2489, or also sending emails to sanhyperion@lacity.org. And folks at both of those can help out if you do have questions about it.
Now, this is me. So back to, so although we've, information sharing, there's a lot of improvement we have to do here. Although we fulfilled our duty by notifying our regulators as mandated, we can do and will go above and beyond in communicating, and we strive to do so. We want to make We want to make that clear that, you know, as you guys know, communication vehicles have changed over the years, especially in the last couple of years, since we first were permitted. So we need to adapt into the current and real-time ways of disseminating information. As most of you know, not even our grandmothers have Facebook and social media. So we need to review our communications protocols, which we're doing as we speak, and how we disseminate information even to local municipalities like yourselves, and are committed to improving more efficient processes moving forward. And you have been added to our list of notifiers in case we have another incident. Next slide, please. As you've seen and heard from our team, we responded in the best way that we could, considering the conditions. We have not had a violation or spill in eleven years. But as we continue to get back to normal, we plan to work with our regulators and engage a third-party assessment, as Tracy alluded to, to find the cause of the incident. Because this facility is not only important to us, to our neighbors like yourself, but to the entire region. Next slide. I want to say thank you for your patience as we navigate through this extremely difficult time. We invite you to come and visit our facility so you can see firsthand the magnitude and scope of our operations and the progress we made towards a full recovery. Due to COVID, though, we must limit the size of our site visits. So it might take a little longer to schedule, but please come and join us to see our amazing, our world-class facility. I also want to invite you to join a virtual town hall that is being hosted by the governance body of, the governance body, the Board of Public Works tomorrow evening. And you should have received the information. If not, we'll make sure to get it to your city manager. And also, just wanted to let you know that we just scheduled the next citizen forum meeting for September twenty-fourth at six PM. As most of you know, we had to postpone a lot of those meetings because, due to COVID. But in closing, I again want to offer our sincere regret for the incident last month at Hyperion and our resolve that we can and will do everything in our power to support the people of El Segundo. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara, Tim, and Tracy. And I would ask, are you okay? We have probably have people in the audience who would like to ask. We have public comments coming up next, and we'd like to, if you're okay with it, ask you and your staff to stay on and answer questions that the public might have. And then the council's going to ask follow-on questions if they haven't been addressed by the public. So are you willing to stick around for that, please?
Absolutely.
Great. So to that end, do we have anyone that would like to come in and speak? How many people do we have to speak about Hyperion specifically for public comments? Madam Clerk?
You talk into the microphone, sorry.
Thirty, did you say thirty public comments?
I have three.
Oh, three, okay.
But Mona may have several that will be.
Virtually? Okay. Well, let's have the people that are here to speak in person first, please, if you would.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while the City Clerk is getting the first speaker. As you remember, we have all those other agencies with their representatives on standby as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for reminding us, appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, please, if you would, thank you. Thanks for being here. If you could just state your name and then, speaking of the mic, I'd love to hear your comments.
My name is, my name is John Thomas. I live on Sierra Place of Pine by the George Brett Baseball Field. And going with the theme of tonight's meeting, seemingly, I'm speaking about the sewage extension coming from my property. On the ninth, my wife Francie told me we have water leaking out the base of our toilet on the first floor. And when we would look out, there was a lot of water. And every time the toilet was used, or any toilets are used upstairs, or showers upstairs, the toilets are rushing out from underneath that toilet. And so we called Roto-Rooter right away. And they came out, and the first guy, he snaked from the downstairs toilet eighty feet. And ten times, he said, he didn't find anything. So he called a, he said a more senior, more experienced plumber. And he came out with a big snake, and he went out on my cleanout on the sidewalk. And he snaked it about ten to fifteen feet. And he got, he hit the roots from trees, which I've got pictures of. Look at him, exhibit A and B. When he started to screw off the cap to the cleanout, the water started spraying up. And I, oh my goodness, so I went to grab my phone, and I couldn't find it. So I went back outside. When I came outside, it was erupting sewage out of my sidewalk into the streets. And while he was working, I was cleaning. I cleaned it up off the street best I could. So it happened here. I built, I bought my house in nineteen ninety-nine, and we rebuilt in two thousand and two. And we included putting in a new sidewalk, because at that time, the street didn't have sidewalks. Now, my neighbors, the profits, they're five twelve. God bless them, but they've been building their house for over two years. And they have this tree, they had, they put a new sidewalk a month ago, or two months ago. But as you see, they didn't put this, she, Ms. Prophet said the city allowed her not to build a sidewalk, to leave her tree here, which is in place, which is in the sidewalk zone. And so this tree is about two meters away from my cleanout. So I think this is the tree is the main culprit. I think my, my, my extension sewer goes out, straight out to the main sewer line. But you know, the extension sewer pipes are clay. And I have a, the diagram I got from the Planning Commission or Projects Division. But this diagram was made in eighteen ninety-five, August eighteen ninety-five. So these pipes are a hundred years old, they're clay, and they're all busted up. I dug out, when I built my house, I dug out the, our sewage pipes were clay, and they were shattered. And so I put in a brand-new, I put in new PVC plastic piping for sewage, so I wouldn't have to go through this. But, well, that was twenty years ago. But I'm going through it now. And I'm just asking for the city to help me, if you could maybe, if you could replace my extension, which is under the street. Goes from my cleanout, is on my sidewalk, and it goes under the street to the sewer. And I'm asking for help to replace my extension, my sewer extension.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Mitnick, did you want to say something?
Sure. Sir, Portland Bates, an analyst in our office, he'll be happy to talk to you right out in the hallway when you're done, and we'll make sure we follow up immediately to answer your questions.
Okay.
Because this is a, the city wastes water responsibility. It's the collection system from his house to the street. So it's not a Hyperion issue, it's a city El Segundo issue, and we'd be happy to help you and follow up.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas, appreciate you being here.
You're welcome.
He'll be right, he'll walk right out there to your left.
Have a good night, thanks. Hello.
Boils.
Yeah.
So, we.
Would you state your name, please?
Lisa, Lisa Latton. I'm a lifelong resident here in El Segundo. First time I've been to a city council meeting here. And so, it's my understanding that Mayor Boils asked LA Sanitation to do the reimbursement of the AC units. And initially, they said no, and then he asked them again, and then they used to reconsider, and then they did reconsider. And then, so, we appreciate that, and.
Just for the record, the whole council was making that request.
Okay, thank you.
Too many different parties, so I can't take credit, but thank you.
Okay, so, that said, there is so much, this comment is directed to whoever's listening from LA Sanitation, there is so much confusion. One day, the page, your page would say that you must have those receipts in within twenty-four hours of buying your AC unit. Then next thing, it'll say that they'll be reimbursed retroactively. And another time, it'll say they'll be reimbursed two weeks prior. So there's been so many changes that it's very mind-boggling to a lot of people. And I was just hoping that someone from LA Sanitation could be like a contact point. If someone's having problems, they could email that person, maybe the lady who is speaking tonight or someone under her. Like, I sent my email to apply, and I still haven't heard back. And so, I, I think that, well, I'll be reimbursed, but it's when? And, you know, this isn't a well-to-do community, and it's not a low-income community. There's some people who can afford to charge it and wait, there's others who can't. So it's just so confusing. And then there's also the issue of, seen on the Hyperion page that Councilmember Sherro is on, like, there's some seniors that can't afford to buy it at all. Now, I know that Aliso Canyon, the Pacific Gas and Electric, purchased twelve-hundred-dollar Aeromax high-quality air purifying machines. And they loaned them to people in Porter Ranch area. And they also relocated people for four months. But I don't know who they loaned them to, I just know that I used to work for Paramount Unified, and we ended up getting them donated to us when we had an air crisis. So I would think, or wish, that the LA Sanitation would consider reaching out and loaning the people that don't have the money to buy it and wait. Then they wouldn't own the machine, but they would at least have one until everything's cleared up. So that's an idea. Also, you know, I don't know for sure, but I don't think this has really been much in the El Segundo Herald. And someone was saying how to get ahold of people here in town, well, especially the seniors, they get their El Segundo Herald. So that would be the way to let them know that this is available, rather than the Daily Breeze, which they may not subscribe to, and they may not be online. And so those were ideas. So we don't know whether it's twelve, twelve, two weeks, twenty-four hours, or tonight, they said on the record, retroactive to the date of the incident. So we'll take that that's the latest and the final. But I would also like to say that I'm really disappointed with AQMD, with the leadership at AQMD for not doing continual air monitoring, for only doing sporadic air monitoring from August second, I think, till the fifth. And so, we weren't really sure what we were being exposed to. Did we need to relocate? Was an air purifier enough? And I know from experience that AQMD can do much better than that, like they did in the city of Paramount in twenty sixteen. But then, then they handed over the entire responsibility for air monitoring to the city of Paramount to pay for and conduct. And I would hope that they wouldn't do that to the city of El Segundo. But just so you know, as you probably already know, but AQMD told Paramount people many times that cities have much greater authority to regulate than they do. Stricter regulations, ordinances. So if they don't do it, you can do it. But it, in my opinion, it is their responsibility to do and pay for in Paramount, in El Segundo, and the companies. It's really shouldn't go fall to the taxpayers. But you're, they're only, I saw that LA Sanitation is testing for the hydrogen. Okay. But we would just like to say one thing, we'd like to test for more, more chemicals than that as are ongoing until this is resolved. And one question I have is, when they said the water quality was affected, maybe they could explain what they mean. I don't think they meant our drinking water or our bathing water, but some people might think that's what they meant. So maybe they could clarify what they meant by that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wagner. I had about six points. Thank you, that's very comprehensive. One is, we probably should tell Ms. Wagner and then anyone else looking, Tanya Durrell is the point of contact. Do we have her information that we could share with the public right now that are watching? An email and a phone number?
It's, it's, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's on the city's website.
Okay. So if you go to elsegundo.org and you look up Tanya Durrell, it's on her homepage. You will find her information and?
And we'll provide it to the speakers right now. And Mrs. Durrell, the Public Information Officer, she's watching this meeting right now. So she'll personally follow up with each speaker.
Okay, and her email is tonya.durrell.lacity.org, Tanya Durrell. And I don't have her phone number handy, but it's on the website. The second point she had Scott was the clarification on the reimbursement program. So hearing about that. And then she talked about Herald inclusion, which I thought was a great idea, because there probably are folks that are not on social media and email all the different channels we're using, and I don't know if we've been in the Herald, but I haven't seen anything. And then she brought up the AQMD monitoring, getting clarification around that. That, and then there was the issue about the water quality, clarifying what we meant by, what they meant by water quality being issued. And then there was finally something about the responsibility, the burden from an expense standpoint being on LA City as opposed to us. And then actually, there's one more point, which was loaning out air filters, which I thought was another great idea, as opposed to people having to go out and buy them if they're readily available. So a lot there, but maybe we could turn to the people on the screen to address these questions. I think I see.
Yeah, Barbara.
Barbara, thank you.
You do have one. Yes, I'll start with this. Just, you know, on the first question in terms of reimbursements, we've never operated a reimbursement program. And I made an executive decision to do this, to show good faith. So, you know, like I said at the beginning, we asked for your patience. And we have been, you know, flexible in updating things and taking your feedback on this. So we apologize if you think things have been changing, because we have been. It's been an evolving process. So I want you to, but I want to reassure you that if you submit your paperwork and it's backdated and it's within this timeframe, you will get reimbursed, as Lisa alluded to it. We've tried the process, you know, the check process is working. So we, you know, we will be notifying and hopefully getting more reimbursements out to those of you. I think the loaning of the air filters is a great idea. I thought we, you know, I think, you know, we should have considered that we didn't. But, you know, hopefully, we don't, if someone comes, you know, asks for it, that needs it, we haven't heard anyone yet, but the recommendation today, we can look into it. We are a public agency, we're not a private, you know, private company like, you know, the gas company. But, you know, moving forward, if that becomes a need, we can look into it. But, you know, I don't, at this point, don't even know where to start on it. But we, we did consider, you know, because we couldn't, we, at one point, considered, do we front the money, where do we have the money? But how many, we didn't want to over-purchase. So this was the best program we made in trying to be responsive. But it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't perfect. So I want to say that. I think the question on, on the water quality, I'll have Tracy try to address that. I think that was the only other thing that we had on the list.
There was something about AQMD, if AQMD is in the line about monitoring, what's being monitored and how frequently and where?
Okay.
Okay, so, so I'll start. And that was a really good point about the water quality. And Lisa was right, it is not potable water. What we're talking about is the treated effluent from Hyperion that we discharge to Santa Monica Bay through our five-mile outfall. So we are permitted for that, and there are permits, limits that we are required to meet. And over the course of this event, we have not been able to meet all of those requirements, as you saw in the graphs that I showed for our total suspended solids and biochemical oxygen demand. Sorry, don't mean to get so technical. But the, the quality of the treated effluent was not where it needed to be. And the graph showed that we are improving, and. And the graph showed that we are improving and, uh, we, we do hope and expect to be back in compliance within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you for clarifying. And then there was a question about the AQMD. Do we have AQMD on as well?
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening, uh, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Jason Lo. I'm the Assistant Deputy, uh, for Science and Technology Development and I lead the Air Monitoring Analysis Group at South Coast AQMD. So, appreciate the inquiry and, and we've known Lisa, she follows, uh, air quality issues. She mentioned Paramount, Aliso Canyon, and now El Segundo, so appreciate the comments and, and her perspective on monitoring. Um, just wanted to give a overview of the types of measurements that we conducted, um, in response to the, uh, event. And, um, just want to be clear that our agency, um, was responding to complaints and at the facility, uh, to conduct investigations. Um, as part of that, uh, they initially, um, took an air sample, uh, on August third, uh, for laboratory analysis to look for hydrogen sulfide, and that's odorless gas associated with, um, the sewage. Uh, the laboratory analysis of the sample, um, showed instantaneous hydrogen sulfide concentration of seventy parts per billion. Um, and as, um, Ms. Director Romero had mentioned, um, the California State Standard, um, would be, um, thirty parts per billion over a one-hour period. Um, however, you know, people can smell it as low as two parts per billion. So, uh, because people can smell it, you know, we, we also want to look at these instantaneous readings to give an indication of where the levels would be at and where in the community. So, uh, follow-up measurements, um, later in the week were conducted with handheld devices, uh, in the morning and also in the evening, um, to look at the hydrogen sulfide levels. And the results, um, for those efforts, so that, uh, ranged from mostly non-detects to, um, some elevated levels up to, uh, ten parts per billion, uh, mostly nearby the facility, uh, to the east of facility, um, is where they saw, um, the more elevated measurements, um, for the first day. Um, some other days did indicate some elevated levels, uh, a little bit farther away, um, but for the most part, they're closer to the facility. Um, but also, uh, in abundance caution, we also want to look at gases are toxics. And by these gases are, are ones that through long-term exposure, uh, could, uh, cause some harm to, uh, people. And this is over a long period, so we're looking at sustained concentrations of these components. So, we deployed, uh, our mobile platform, which can look for these air toxics, and also it can look for methane, another, uh, gas that's associated, um, with sewage. And, uh, the results from those measurements, uh, we did take a look basically from east of the facility all the way through, um, Pacific Coast Highway, um, concentrating our efforts, uh, to the communities that were closest to the facility. And we found that, um, the methane concentrations were pretty much within typical, although they were, uh, slightly, uh, higher near the facility, um, than away from the facility. Um, when we looked at the gases are toxics, there was one, uh, out of the entire three-and-a-half-hour route, there was one, um, couple-second blip, uh, of elevated air toxics for which our team went back several times to, to see if it was repeatable. And, uh, that was not repeated. Um, we also, uh, did it the following day, uh, another set of measurements, and it's pretty similar. Uh, most of the gases are toxics were within typical levels. Um, there was one, uh, elevated point, um, that we did, um, see a little bit of, uh, repeat on, um, on the northwest side of the community. And, uh, we're conducting, um, continued investigations as, um, there may be other things to investigate in that area. Lastly, I want to indicate that, um, three grab samples, and these are samples that are, uh, just collected at an instant, uh, to be analyzed, uh, by our laboratory to look at a whole host of, uh, gases, air pollutants, including air toxics. Um, and we looked at the analysis of those grab samples, um, mainly near the facility. And the levels of gases are toxics were, um, within what we expect for typical air. And the only elevated compound that we saw was, um, was isopropanol, which is a, a common cleaning agent. Uh, just also want to mention that we have our, um, our community air monitoring, uh, site, uh, at the St. Anthony Church, which is about mile, uh, southeast of the facility, which does do continuous measurements of air toxics and other pollutants and review that data, uh, continuously given the incident. And we also look at the refinery fence line data, that's at Chevron, uh, which is located about zero-point-five miles, uh, southeast of the facility. Um, that concludes my report for, uh, our efforts with regards to air monitoring.
Thank you, sir. I think we got everything from Mrs. Wagner, I'm pretty sure. Let me look at my list. Is there anything, Scott, that you, that wasn't covered?
Uh, I'll personally follow up with the, uh, El Segundo Herald.
Okay, great.
I know they had a, and they, last week or the week before, they told me they were gonna cover it, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh, you have one more speaker, I believe.
Yes, okay, let's have the next speaker come in. Hello, Mrs. McGinn. If you could state your name, please, it'd be great.
Hi, uh, Shannon McGinn. I'm at three-three-seven and three-three-nine Hillcrest. Uh, I am not speaking about the Hyperion, but I have a lot to say if you wanted to hear about it. I'm, uh, actually speaking about the stop sign that we are trying to get at Pine and Hillcrest. If you're traveling west on Pine and you want to make a left onto Hillcrest and there are any cars in the first, second, or third spots on Hillcrest to the right, you cannot see oncoming traffic. And if you're going down Hillcrest, you're coming from Palm or Mariposa, you are flying. You don't even think about people coming in on Pine. People get air at the top of our hill and we've had many accidents. We had one neighbor lose two cars in a couple of months. So, it's just, I know about fifteen years ago, there was a new stop sign added at Mariposa and, and Hillcrest. And there's a stop sign at Palm and Hillcrest, and if we could have one at Pine and Hillcrest, it would just make it so much safer because it is crazy there. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. McGinn, appreciate it. Do we have anyone else here in person that would like to speak? Two more, okay, great, thank you. How you doing, Mr. Smith?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, as member of the, uh, members of the council, uh, Mr. City Manager, how are you? Um, so, I'm here tonight.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry, sorry. No, no, it's okay. Uh, Avery Smith, El Segundo resident. Uh, I've been here almost twenty years. Um, and I'm here tonight to speak, uh, on the Hyperion disaster. And, um, you know, in our last, uh, DEI meeting, on one of our residents, uh, oh, sorry.
Avery, sorry about the pain. Would you mind putting on a face mask?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, absolutely, thank you. Thank you, okay. Got it, got it. Okay, sorry. Okay, so, one of our, uh, uh, committee members, uh, Kenneth Chansey, brought up the Hyperion spill and, um, were there any adverse or DEI, uh, perspective that we needed to consider? And so, after the meeting, I went out on social media and contacted members of the community. And certainly, uh, there is, um, something that, that I wanted to address with you guys, uh, from a DEI perspective. You know, as we think about DEI, um, a lot of people think about, you know, whether it be race, uh, whether it be, uh, gender, sexual orientation, or whatever it may be. Um, but many times, um, some of the most neglected or marginalized members of the community, uh, are those who are on a, a fixed income, uh, they don't have much of a disposable income, uh, the elderly or the disabled. And, uh, I would easily say that this, uh, disaster has affected them in a very adverse way. And, uh, I had some prepared comments, um, I've kind of put those to the side, um, because, uh, I'm a bit disappointed, uh, with the response, uh, tonight, uh, from the various agencies on the call. Um, you know, I, I, I appreciate that, uh, folks feel that we're on the road to recovery, but I think there are a lot of people, uh, in this town, in the city, that feel that they're on a different road, uh, that feel that they are on a road towards financial hardship that they had no cause in, in, in bringing up. And there are a lot of people tonight, um, and I would encourage, and I appreciate also, that you have, um, the opportunity, that we have the opportunity as residents to conduct and, and, and do site visits, uh, at Hyperion, but I would actually ask that those people conduct site visits here. Um, and I think they would see something a little different. I think they would see residents who are struggling, who are trying to figure out how to pay three, four, five-thousand-dollar hotel bills, uh, without reimbursements. You would, you would see residents, um, who are, uh, you know, about to go to school and have to talk to their kids about, um, either, uh, fronting money towards an air conditioner or, or paying rent. Um, we have a very serious, uh, financial hardship problem for many residents in this town. And, um, as an executive myself, um, I've always felt that the best answers and the best ideas come from residents. And so, again, I would implore those folks, uh, who are on this call tonight, come speak to us. I think from the hotel's, uh, perspective, um, you know, it's very easy to set up a direct, direct bill, billing arrangement. It's very easy to do that. And so, we have residents in hotels right now, um, why don't we get that set up with the city? It takes literally fifteen minutes. I used to work, when I graduated college, I used to work at a hotel for two years. Uh, it literally takes fifteen minutes to set up these direct billing arrangements so that these resi- residents can have a, uh, some sense of peace of mind. Um, and so, that's what I would, I would, I would implore that. I would ask these re- these, uh, uh, the people on the line today to come out and speak to the residents of El Segundo. And so, um, with that, I think there are many ideas. I know there are other people, I don't want to repeat, um, what others have said. I think the final thing that I would say again is, um, the residents of this town really feel, uh, that they're not being listened to. Um, and that the situation was not acknowledged properly. Um, and so, I thank, uh, El Segundo City Council, everything you guys have done. I know you have advocated very strongly for the residents, uh, but the residents have a lot of questions about air quality, uh, again, the financial hardship situation, um, the residents that chose the air purifier option. Now, they have power bills that are much higher, um, than what they normally are. Um, there was no per diem and no money set aside beyond the six or twelve-hundred dollars. What are those residents supposed to do? You know, uh, there was a stat that I read the other day that, you know, almost fifty percent of Americans, when they're faced with another six-hundred or seven-hundred dollars in extra bills, that puts them in financial hardship. And so, without any, uh, date of, of this reimbursement, i- i- it feels like it's not coming. And so, we need that accountability. And I know sometimes, again, from being an executive myself, accountability can be hard, but that's exactly what we need here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Mitnick, you want to take that or turn it over to, uh, LA City staff and representative agencies?
Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my, my first thoughts on this would be, um, as we've indicated all along here, uh, that, uh, LA City will gladly work with each and every, uh, resident with their situation and do the best that they can. Um, uh, almost two thousand nine hundred applications have already come in. So, again, Tanya Dur- Durrell, the Public Information Officer, she would be happy to, uh, follow up with each and every, every resident. We'll put them in touch with them, so we'll let them speak if you would like to. And also, if individuals have, um, been, um, impacted in greater ways, they are free to file a claim directly with LA City. There is a process for that.
You know, it's, it's an interesting point, though. I wonder, the people that either don't have the means or the resources to do this, to come out of pocket first, you know, may struggle to, uh, so I think we probably should do an outreach program to our residents. It's city, probably LA City-led, but with some oversight or some orchestration on our end to get a sense of how big of a problem this is. Because if people, to, to Avery's point, if seven-hundred dollars come out of pocket, is that significant? Which I remember when I was renting a two-bedroom apartment as a single dad, if you had told me I had to come up seven-hundred bucks when I was living paycheck to paycheck, that would not have happened, so it is a, it is a strong point that we should look into to understand to what extent that's happening.
I, I think if council's okay, get, uh, Mrs. Durrell from Hyperion to explain how they might be working with the impacted individuals in hotels in these type of situations.
Yeah, is she on? Is Tanya on?
She's on the, um.
She's on, and I, I can take the first part of it, um, first. Um, so, we have been considering a case-by-case basis on this. Um, and, you know, one person has requested it, requested it, um, that we front that, um, the cost. And we, you know, it's, it's, it worked, so we could work on case-by-case basis, but, uh, um, if we, if we need to. But we, we haven't, um, seen, you know, have had, we've only had one request at this point. Correct, Tanya?
Yes, that's correct. And, and Pam Perez can also speak to, uh, the hotels that are in partnership with us. But if people want to reach out to us, to me specifically, also, they can, uh, email sandhyperion@la-city.org. And we will, uh, review each case and make sure that, um, um, we, we settle those, those issues. Okay?
Yeah, and I just, Mrs. Durrell, I want to say thank you. You've been a real, I've seen the email threads where they're emailing the entire council and then you respond, and it's typically within an hour, so thank you for everything you're doing. I know you're working hard. Mr. Mitnick, you were going to say something?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, if there's any confusion about anything tonight, if any resident has, um, any questions or have uncertainty, just have them contact the city manager and we'll go from there.
Okay, can we, can we take it a step further, though? I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think to the point earlier, we heard about the Herald and every, um, because there's been such a, just, it's been like a fire hose of information, it's been changed. The reimbursement program has changed like three or four times, and thank you for continuing to revise it and accommodate our residents. I think we need a final, just bottom line, bold prints everywhere. Do you have any questions or comments? Contact. I hate to overwhelm you, Tanya, but I just want to make sure that if there's this finite period that we have to address these issues, that everyone in the city, we can feel confident knowing everyone in the city has gotten the message loud and clear and feels comfortable proceeding. Because I'd hate for them to attend the program and then there's residents that are left behind.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with them.
Absolutely, that's our goal, and I, and I would encourage folks to use that other, uh, email as well, sandhyperion@la-city.org. And we have, uh, staff, um, you know, uh, looking into that email account every, uh, every day as well, so.
You know, I wanted, I wanted to address one more thing that I think one of the, uh, speakers said earlier, um, about our Hyperion website. So, you know, um, the suggestion to add, um, progress reports on the recovery efforts were, um, your, your own city manager, in my, one, in one, my, in my meeting with him, he suggested that we do that to provide up-to-date information and we ended, it took a couple of days, but we did it. So, um, we are, um, we are open to, to this kind of feedback and collaboration, um, moving forward.
So, I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Scott.
I do want to say it to what Avery is speaking about, there are seniors in town that aren't on social media, that don't have computers, and the only mode of communication is via phone. And I think, like, there's a woman I know who lives, she's a hundred next month, in September, that lives on Hillcrest. And so, luckily, you know, I reached out to her and I was able to connect her and get her sorted out. But there's a lot of other seniors out there, and I think if we, as a city, we know who they are, if we could proactively do an outreach to those seniors through the Jocelyn Center, I think that as a city, we could, um, hopefully catch some of those. And thank you to the librarians for doing that imaging and scanning of documents because there's a lot of people in town who don't have access to scan up their receipts. And we, as a city, need to make sure that we are partnering with these, our own residents, and doing proactive outreach and communication.
It's a great idea, Carol. Any other comments on this one, from Diaz? Okay, you got a lot to, I think, follow up on there, Mr. Mitnick.
Yes, sir.
That was a good one, thank you. Thank you. Do we have, uh, one more speaker? And we still got council questions and comments. Got a couple more speakers, so please come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for being here tonight and allowing me to speak. I have all this to read to you today. No, I'm just kidding.
We do, too.
My name's Nikia Gonzalez, and, um, I'm a resident of El Segundo for the last eleven years, and this has been like the worst situation. I've, uh, been listening to Hyperion read over their timeline, which really makes me even more upset than I already am. July eleventh, one PM, this started. July eleventh, at one PM, I was preparing for camp for my daughter to go to the beach camp that next day. They evacuated between three o'clock, their employees. I was shopping at Target for a bathing suit. At seven PM, they had their spill. At seven PM, I'm packing lunch for my daughter's camp. At midnight, I'm still preparing for my day. At eight o'clock, I'm getting my daughter dressed. They are just finishing spilling raw sewage into our ocean one mile out. I'm dropping her off at nine o'clock. She's in the water until about noon. Hyperion knew about this, the city of Los Angeles, all of this information, everybody knew, except for El Segundo. Uh, at two-fifteen PM, our mayor found out. We talked about this a couple of days later on social media. Um, I didn't find out until six forty-seven PM from Champ Camp. The only reason my, my daughter was pulled from the ocean was because a. The only reason my, my daughter was pulled from the ocean was because a twenty-two, twenty-three year old leader of the camp removed her from the ocean because she saw someone place a sign. No one told the lifeguards to remove the children, so they allowed everyone to swim. So all this information is like making me sick. I am very upset. I am a single mother, I live on one income, and I do my best to raise my children here. This is the first time I allowed my daughter to join any facility since COVID. To not allow her to be a part of this camp, like the way she was supposed to be, and like the fact that she was in this water just angers me so much, because someone mentioned, you know, the technology chains. Well, you know what? We've been getting Nixls for years. There's no excuse for this. I am disappointed beyond belief, because it's 2021, and it shouldn't take a catastrophe to figure out how to work social media, how to work your Nixle reports, who to report to, and El Segundo should be the number one you should report to first, because we sit in the backyard of your plant. Like, this is just beyond ridiculous to me. Um, ever since then, like, I know you guys, the city reached out to ask for a request for us to get help, air conditioning, uh, hotel stay. Hyperion said no. It wasn't until the twenty-second that I had a protest in front of their, uh, facility did they come out and say, we're going to help you. We're going to help all El Segundo residents. Then from there, it wasn't all of us, it was some of us. It wasn't helping me, because I live on the east side. But then we went out again, spoke to the media, then they said, okay, we're opening it up to, for everybody. So I understand that you're not in the process of, uh, rolling out reimbursement plans and trying to help the city, and not knowing exactly how bad it was, but did you step outside? I mean, did you drive down the street? I, this is ridiculous that people are like, we didn't understand that how far it spread. Didn't just stop on Main Street. Um, since then, people have been suffering, suffering. I have been suffering, my neighbors, my community, I pretty much know a person on every single block in El Segundo. Every single one of those people have been, been hurt by this. It's August seventeenth, this should not be the first time we're hearing from Hyperion. We shouldn't have moms drafting documents. Luckily, we have a town of great and amazing women that are smart, and they're mothers, so they care. Because I feel like if we didn't do this, no one would have said anything. I mean, I know you guys are working very hard, but I think the voices of the parents in our community are the reason why a lot of people are stepping up to the plate, and it shouldn't take that. It should take you, you, because the mistake happened there. And I understand that stuff happens, but we've heard a lot of different communication. First, it was a power outage, then it was a couch got inside of the sewage. I don't, I don't know. But what's gonna, what, what are we gonna, what's gonna happen if it happens again next week? How are we going to handle this going forward? It's frightening to me, because I'm breathing this every single day. My daughter was in the ocean, so what's next? I mean, I'm glad it's getting fixed, I'm happy that you guys got to go out there to experience it, and I understand that everyone's working very hard to clean it up, but that's what you have to do, right? But what's going to happen for our community? Avery just mentioned the people that don't have the support. I'm one of those women. I'm the woman that contacted, I'm Miss Tanya. I don't feel like I should have to pay out of my pocket. I've already lost six hundred dollars from two camps that my kid could not participate in. So I just want you to know how hard this is for us, our, the parents, I mean, you guys are all parents here, but specifically for me, because I just listened to this, I read this, and I'm like, there was enough time to notify us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Just to recap, the, the real question is what's happening next and how do we prevent it from going forward? That's what I heard at the end of there. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mitnick, there, there may be a point in there for a subsequent meeting or debrief with LA County Public Health about the communication breakdown, because clearly the investigation seems to say that, 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 that communication effort stopped, that chain was broken at the Department of Public Health, and I think there's probably room to investigate that later on.
Yeah, and I, and just on that topic, I want to commend Supervisor Han for owning it, being a supervisor of the LA County Board of Supervisors. She was the one that asked for that first after-action report that established that the county did in fact drop the ball, so to speak, on notifying us. And I know there's another report coming any day now. Yeah, thank you, Chris, Mayor, for your time.
Wow, that was, uh, pretty much everything I wanted to say. Um, she knocked it out of the park.
Sorry, would you state your name, please?
I, I was about to.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, my name's Rudy Varga. I was in the water that day, I was surfing, I woke up nice and early, and said, I'm going to go for a surf today. No signs nowhere, had no idea what was going on, no one knew anything that was going on. I was, I found out later when I got home, you know, around noon time, I was like, there's a sewage spill in El Segundo? Like, how, how did this happen? No one said anything, there was no knowledge, like, you know, what year do we live in? This is one of the nicest cities around here, um, one of the greatest beaches around here, plenty of surfers out there, you know, we're out there early. It happened, and there was plenty of time to like, you know, let these lifeguards know, maybe Hill Bay know, or, you know, something. It just really grossed me out, you know? I'm not here to complain about, you know, my heating or my AC or whatever, my air scrubber. I was just, I, I, there's no real words for me to explain, like, my feeling, I felt like dirty, and I felt disgusting, and I, I get it, you know, things happen, accidents happen, but what, what is going to change to make this not happen again? What steps can be done to at least like, you know, maybe a mass text out, or, I don't know, close the beaches way early? Like, they dropped the ball big time, you know? There was plenty of hours, you know, hours and hours that went by, and nothing happened, you know? It's like, you know, how, how can that happen in today's age? I, I just don't understand that part. But that, that lady knocked it out of the park. I don't know her name, but man, I agree with her a hundred percent, that's everything I wanted to say. She said it way better than I can never say it, but oh my God, it was exactly everything I have. So some steps need to change, obviously. Um, you know, it's, we're, we're at the best time of our lives, you know? So let's make something happen. You know, accidents happen, but, you know, there needs to be clarity, and people need to be held responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Varga, I appreciate it. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there anyone here? Okay. We have one more here? Yeah, we have time, for sure. Yeah, this is important. Hello, if you could please state your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tamara Kachowski. I am an eighteen-year resident here of El Segundo. And first, I want to say thank you for you guys jumping in and trying to make these changes and make our lives a little better here in El Segundo. But there's a couple of things I want to dovetail on from Avery's comments, and those comments are addressed to Tanya, I believe, in particular. Um, or Tanya, I'm, I'm, my apologies, forgetting your name wrong. My question to you would be, how is it that they are going to actually plan to help residents that are in a financial situation? So if you cannot afford the air conditioner and the AC unit, for example, apartment dwellers, where this odor gets trapped inside our units, you have to keep the doors and windows closed, you can't escape it, and then when the wind, when the wind shifts, you can open it, so your full-time job becomes mitigating the smells that come into your, your apartment. And when you can't financially afford to pay for that AC to cool down the air, because it's sixty-six degrees outside, but your apartment is eighty-three in the morning and hitting eighty-seven by the afternoon because you're keeping it closed, that's a problem. And when you're still breathing the gases that are being released throughout the day and the night that are not continuously getting readings, that's a problem. We all know that hydrogen sulfide causes respiratory depression. In large quantities, it'll kill you. In small doses over an extended period of time, it causes the same respiratory depression. That brings me to myself. Hate being front and center, but here I am. I cannot breathe. I had to be put on an inhaler, I'm finding out that I have a surgery date that is now scheduled coming up on the third. I have reached out to all of these departments on multiple occasions, and I can say that Janice Han has been my biggest supporter, her and Jennifer, in trying to make some accommodations. And Tanya reached out and sent me some options, which went back to Mr. Vasquez, but they're not, they're inadequate. So if you're going to offer window units, and you give me three things to choose from to help, and a window unit doesn't work, and you offer a floor model that doesn't have a carbon-dense filter, so you are giving people a false sense of security, because we know that you need carbon dense, meaning at least three inches of solid carbon to filter this out. So if you're coming from toxicology, and you're speaking with these people, but they're feeling that here's your options, it doesn't work. And I heard another comment earlier that was, you know, okay, great suggestion, maybe you loan these things out to residents who can't buy it. Loan what out? You, you're paying for it for residents who are here, and you're reimbursing them, but if you can't afford it, we're going to possibly loan it to you and then take it back? How does that help us in the future? Because we all know in El Segundo, we have a lot of one-offs from Hyperion. And when we have these one-offs, they don't get bombarded with phone calls, because we get used to it. This is different. This affects everything. And for my daughter to lay her head in my lap and cry and wonder if this has affected mom's lungs, because I'm already compromised, many of us are, I'm not the only one in this situation, but when radiation compromises your heart and lungs, and now further right before your surgery, this is what hits you? And now you have to undergo a whole battery of other tests you didn't normally need, just to see if you're going to wake up from your surgery? This shouldn't be the stress that I have right now. And it's not just me. There are multiple other residents in El Segundo who have cancer. I'm not alone. I've got neighbors in my building who have asthma. I have an entire building full of, of residents who, a lot of them don't speak complete English. And when you ask them to call and make complaints, no, 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 they don't want to get in trouble. And you can't convey to them that one has nothing to do with the other, your immigration status is not tied to this air quality, it's hard to get through that barrier. And so they're suffering in the exact same way, only they're doing it in silence. I'm not. I'm actually putting my hot mess out before all of you, and this is the hardest thing I've ever done. So I would like you to take it into consideration that there should be some sort of a fund, and it should be something that is fit to each resident, because my residence isn't the same as yours. Mine's a townhouse style, two, two apart, two bedrooms upstairs, living room downstairs. So what are we supposed to do? Live in the downstairs with the AC? We supposed to not sleep in our rooms with one purifier? Because I can tell you, you're not getting a carbon-dense air purifier for each of your rooms, along with an air conditioner, for six hundred dollars, because you live in a smaller unit? But that's what it requires. So I'm asking you to take into consideration the needs of what the residents require in their particular situation. So I know my, my situation has not been resolved, and when I go in to see my doctor again, which was supposed to be next week on Monday, they pushed it to tomorrow. So that doesn't make me feel good, it doesn't leave me confidence that she now is pushing this up to see me, to make sure that I can breathe. I shouldn't be carrying an inhaler, I've not been on an inhaler, but now I am, antihistamines. At one point, I had absolutely no voice. As I speak to you today, my lungs hurt. My lungs shouldn't hurt, but I am right at Imperial and Hillcrest. And yet, and this morning was the very first time in twenty-seven calls that I've made to air quality that somebody actually had a handheld meter. And when those readings are taken after the fact, hours later, what good is that data? So I have to ask, and I have to ask your, I have to also question the graph that showed that they had five monitors along the western side, facing towards the ocean. If our air is blowing easterly and into El Segundo, why are you monitoring the air headed out to the ocean? Seems like common sense to me, I don't know. But I would like you guys to think about what we're being exposed to. And I'd like more answers, and I know they said it's going to be on the website as to what they're using to clean. And I know that we have changed and smelled these change, changes from minute to minute. So you might be going, getting bombarded with a smell of a fluid for a while, which will change into the smell of chlorine or bleach, which then moves on to a very sweet smell, as if somebody's baking. Or laundry, like the whole town's doing laundry all at once. We know these are cleaning agents. We want to know exactly what it is we're being exposed to and how much.
Thank you.
I don't think that's too much to ask.
Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, who would like to address? There's a question about the reimbursement program flexibility, and there was a question
Barbara, do you want to take that?
Oh, I, I wanted to confirm what the question was.
There was a, there was an ask for more flexibility in the reimbursement program and/or funds in advance to help people with their particular situation, so there was that. And then there was a concern about the AQMD readings, so more on that, maybe clarification from the AQMD and the five monitoring stations, or the five places where the monitoring was being done.
Like Lisa mentioned and I mentioned, it, you know, we're open to, and Tanya, case-by-case basis, so, um, I know Tanya had reached out to her, um, and emailed her, and we hadn't heard back, so.
Actually.
Now that, if you could please just email Tanya or get a, get ahold of her, so you guys can connect on this, we really appreciate it, so we can address the issue.
Can I readdress that?
Sure.
So actually, the reason that I did not go back to Tanya, because I was led to believe that she was an administrator, she was just pushing out three options to me. So I went directly to toxicology, someone who was going to understand my particular needs. So I took her email and my phone conversation, memorialized it in an email, and sent it over to Robert Vasquez, who was to get with Tanya. It's been two weeks now since we've had that conversation.
Can, can I trust that the, you guys will follow up, you, LA City will follow up specifically?
Thank you.
With this resident? Okay. Thank you.
Tanya will call you.
Absolutely, I'll be in touch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and then there was just a question to the AQMD about the monitoring that's being done, maybe just restating or clarifying a little bit more about that, please.
Uh, hi, this is, uh, Jason from South Coast AQMD. Tamara, thank you for, uh, the inquiry, but just wanted to clarify, were you talking about the, uh, fence line readings, um, from the Hyperion station of hydrogen sulfide, or are you talking about the community, um, monitoring that's at St. Anthony Church, conducted by South Coast AQMD? I thought it was the hydrogen sulfide at the fence line, um, but I appreciate clarification.
No, you're correct. It's, I'm questioning the five that were circled in your, in your graphic that are to be, that are along, um, the ocean there. Where the winds blow easterly and not westerly. So why are we, why are we monitoring from there? Why that particular point? And why not directly behind Hyperion at Imperial and near Hillcrest, where the bulk of this took place? Because we, we know from your graphics, and we know that most of the acreage that was submerged happened in that northern portion of the plant, correct?
So my understanding is the fence line readings are, are taken by the, uh, Hyperion staff, um, using a handheld device, so maybe I'll, um, bring that question back to Director Romero and, uh, and, uh, the plant manager, who may be able to address that. But, um, go ahead, and I can fill in any details if you'd like, Director Romero.
Thank you. Um, so the fence line, um, monitoring that we're doing is at eleven sites, eleven locations, um, but I'll have Tim, um, go into further detail of why we're doing those.
And Tamara, they are on the east side of the plant.
Excuse me?
They are on the east side of the plant.
Okay, because from the graphic, from the way we were looking at it, it looked like it was.
No.
it was the fence on the side of the ocean. That's why we were all out there looking at it confused.
Yeah.
Okay, so that answers my question.
Yeah, it's between the residential neighborhood and them.
But I do have a question on the fence line monitoring. The data that was presented, it starts on 7/26. This happened on 7/11.
Right.
So why did it take 14 days or 15 days to start monitoring the data?
Councilmember Persa, could you hold that question? Because we haven't even started council comments and questions yet. So are you satisfied with your responses?
I am.
Thank you. Okay, and Tanya's going to follow up with you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. I'm sorry to hear about your illness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone here in person, Madam Clerk? No one here in person? No further? Okay, do we have anyone? Mona, do we have anyone online, virtually, that would like to speak?
Yes. Her name is Sherry. Sherry, your hand was up, and I've moved you over.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm kind of like a new residential here in, I'm Sherry, and I'm kind of new residential here in El Segundo, just one year. And I have to say, I didn't aware the kind of accident until two weeks later that I look up like the community or something, or like talk to my neighbors. Lots of my neighbors, I'm located in Loma Vista. And I also have lots of people aware like how serious it could be. And maybe some people, they are not sensitive, so they didn't smell anything. And one thing I'm really a little bit worried is that, I think most of, after like the most serious, like I think the first few days, you guys start like the emission in the midnight. Because the good thing is that my living schedule is not so stable, not like so stable because I have to communicate with people in other countries. And after I purchased the air purifier, I'm not sure if the air purifier or the air conditioner works well. Because even I purchased the medical grade, which is like H13 HEPA grade air purifier. And I have two air purifier devices, like one is for 12 square feet, one is for 1,200 square feet, one for 1,000 square feet. And I turn on them at the same time during the midnight. Most, like I choose the one that have the sensor. During the midnight, the number still goes up to like 18, 19 something, or up to, sometimes up to 100. And I close my door. I don't know if that's because my unit is not like really airtight, but it doesn't look like a good solution for me. And since I'm kind of new to here, I'm thinking to relocate to other place or some, something. But I would say it's something kind of we need to worry about because even the air purifier turns on, and the highest grade is H13 I can find. And I have like multiple device, like a turn on, it doesn't still looks like a workable solution to me. And I would like you guys, you can release the time that you guys start the emission, especially in the midnight, because I think that's lots of the residential here. Mine, Nicolet, or didn't aware, that's the thing, the time that you guys start listing out the pollution. Because during the afternoon, the air is perfect, like 10 or something like no pollution. In the morning, might be a little bit like 50 something. I'm not sure like how accurate those numbers are because those two device, even like I both, I thought both of them are like really good quality. And they still have like the number of difference about 15. Like one might be say, oh, it's 19 right now, and the other is like, okay, 75. It's kind of hard to believe the numbers on the device as well. But for sure, once you guys start the emission, the number goes up like just in 10 minutes or something. It just go from 0 to 280 like in 10 minutes. It's kind of scary. And besides the impact in the El Segundo city, I would say it impact the downtown LA city or, because the wind direction, the kind of infection is kind of invisible. Not only our city got impacted, but the whole downtown area got impacted during the time that you guys released the pollution, the polluted air. So this is something I have concern because those have like long-term health impact for lots of people. Yeah, that's my word. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. She. So I think the concern was about the air quality, at least based on her device, changing in the evenings. So is there anyone that would like to address that concern or comment?
Maybe AQMD, I don't know. Tim?
Yeah, I was going to say, we definitely regret the inconvenience to the community. As we mentioned, we held material onsite for three weeks, and that definitely impacted the community. It could possibly be wind directions at a certain time of the day. Typically, in the past, we've always monitored the five stations to the north, starting from Imperial. And that's the area where we typically have, that's the solid section of the plant, and not as clean as the rest of the plant. That's where we get the materials in at the very beginning. So we typically monitor, we've been monitoring those for many years at once a week. And then, so during this period, we switched on 7/26 to start monitoring twice a day. And those are the readings that you see. But we know for sure that we impacted the residents because of the material that we stored onsite. So I would just say it's most likely the wind direction at the certain time of the day, as the wind shifts, then different residents are impacted at different time and during that same period. But what we do also know now that with the progress that we've made, those numbers will continue to go down. And then also, one thing that we do for reference is we look at the AQMD St. Anthony 24-hour a day monitoring station, and that gives us a guide in terms of how our numbers are looking at with that overall general community numbers. So I just looked at it, and it was H2S right now is somewhere around 0.4 ppb or there about, extremely low at this point. So that's not to say somebody may not smell it, or it may not be impacting residents. But what I would say to that, as we make the progress in terms of treating that, the material that we've held onsite, and those numbers will begin to go down. So if you look historically on the part on the north side, which we monitor, you see a lot of the numbers generally, H2S stays at zero on the fence line. And that's where we want to get back to on a consistent basis.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Mona, do we have anyone else here?
No, no other hands are raised.
Okay. LA City and the other representative agencies, if you wouldn't mind, we're going to do a quick break, maybe five minutes, and then we'll come back for council comments and questions. So we'll reconvene at 8:05 PM. Okay? Okay, LA City, thank you for being patient with us. All right, we are on to council comments and questions, and I'm sure there are plenty. So I'll defer to whoever would like to go first. Okay, Councilmember Persa.
So this is really addressed to the Hyperion team. You know, as I heard, I heard you give explanations about some things. Two comments gave me pause. One comment was, you know, we're only a public entity, we're not the gas company. And the other comment was, well, communication has changed. Those two comments gave me pause because why do we feel that government agencies should not be held to the same standards as private sector companies? And we, as a city council, hold our city to high standards, and we have that same expectation from you. And when it comes to communication, maybe the mode of communication has changed, but the responsibility to give proactive communication has not changed. So my challenge to you as an entity is why was your proactive communication, why did it fall, why did it not happen? So, you know, we, as a city, are surrounded by some major entities. We have Chevron to our south, with Hyperion to our east, with the airport to our north, with the Air Force Base to our east. So Hyperion to our west. Each of those entities, we have partnerships and relationships with. And the one, you know, that's more similar to you is Chevron. And I have to say, they have the gold standard in handling situations. And, you know, I know that I have, and I'm sure many of, most of my city council members here, have participated in a lot of their tabletop exercises and their significant spill exercises. And they put a lot of effort, and a lot of money, and a lot of time into ensuring that they go through those processes every couple of years, and they do what they call a significant spill exercise. And when they do that, they bring on 300 to 500 people, all the agencies, and they test not only their communications, their policies, their practices, and their equipment. And they do that so they're prepared. And what I find, just with your two comments, those two that I referred to earlier, means that you're not doing that. And that's where we're frustrated, and that's why you have the frustration from the residents. So my challenge to you, from a government agency to another government agency, why are you holding yourself to a lower standard than what we expect our public sectors to do? And so that's where I feel we need to work. You know, my concern about why did it take us almost 24 hours to be notified about the situation? And just even, I just wrote down a couple timelines, they just, they don't make sense. And why is it that, you know, we have people surfing and kids going to camp in the ocean, and we don't have any notifications up there? So that's my challenge to you as a city council from El Segundo. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, and my expectation as our neighbor and as our partner, that you should be doing the same. Ms.?
Councilmember, I agree. And we did, like I said, we notified the State Office of Emergency Services immediately as required under our permit. And then we notify, and then they in turn notified other related agencies. We send out our own notification internally to our city departments the night of, you know, the agency, but it didn't include, you weren't El Segundo, was in fact not included on that distribution list. We have done that now. So you have been added to that list now. And so I apologize for not, you know, for not doing that. And we, when I say we do hold ourselves to a higher standard, what I meant about the gas company in terms of the recipient, the one resident who was indicating of what the gas company had done, I was referring to their program that we don't, you know, we typically don't have a reimbursement program because we are a public agency. This is the first time we've done that. That was my reference, not in terms of accountability. That's why I'm here with you, to be held accountable for what happened in this incident. And that I am, you have my commitment that moving forward, this communication is going to improve. And if you ask your city manager, your public works director, you know, we've been in ongoing communication because, yes, it took a couple of days, but after that, when I realized that you weren't on the notification list, I made myself available and accessible in the entire team. So I, you know, I can't change what happened, but I could change moving forward how we deal with these kinds of situations.
And I appreciate that, and I, you know, I'm thankful that you were stepping up. And so remember, this isn't about, I'm not talking personally toward you or to others. But my challenge, though, is, you know, I don't want to see us spending a ton of time and ton of money on analysis to determine, you know, what should we be doing when we should already be establishing major spill, like significant doing, when we should already be establishing major spill, like significant incident teams. And, you know, reach out to Chevron. Chevron had, like I said, they do this every couple of years, and I know we've all been invited, they invite all of our agencies, they invite all the California agencies, and they check everything. Not only is it just policies, equipment, communication protocols, and I just think they're a gold standard, and I think you, it would be, would benefit you, as a, as an entity, to reach out to them and find out who they use and what they do.
Thank you. We'll look into that. And I know the county's report is going to address this issue, and we're going to be participating in their emergency procedures process. That is going to come out from the request, the request of the county board of supervisor. But you're correct, in our report, we, we don't, in our scope of work, we indicated that we, you know, we want just to address the operational challenges and the communication challenges. So, we already know, and some of those things were improving, but some of them, we also need validation to make sure we hear what are the best practices out there, like what you're indicating with Chevron. So, we'll, we'll make sure to reach out to them as well. And as, as the third part of your, your assessment and your statement was, do we have emergency protocols? Absolutely, we do. And Tim could speak more to that, but one of the things, as we have, we have an emergency protocol plan, we never anticipated the level of flooding. We, we were prepared for resilience of, you know, water coming in from off-site, from, from the ocean, not necessarily from internally. So, we, we didn't, so that was part of the issue that, that happened, is we had a protocol, and when we were working on trying to keep all the water in, we realized, you know, you know, in foresight, that you should have been, you know, we should have notified you, even about the odors, I think you, you said that earlier. You know, why did, why did it take so long? And it took long because we were so focused on the recovery efforts, that, in retrospect, we realized that we should have told you that, that this odors might be coming if, you know, if we don't get the operation of the plant back to 100%. So, that's also, you know, in foresight, we know now we need to, if we have any kind of situation like this, that it's better to, to inform you of what could come up versus just focusing on getting the plant to 100%.
And then also, just on that fence line monitoring, you know, Chevron was mandated that they had to put up automated fence line monitors. So, you know, you guys are saying that you're doing handheld, and it took you two weeks to do that. You know, there's another example where, why is a public entity held to a different standard than a public, a private entity held to a different standard than a public entity? And I find that unacceptable, and my challenge to you, as a, as a public entity, is to get those fence line monitors up, reach out to them, find out who they use. But they have been mandated to do them, and I think that is something that we, as residents that are downwind from you, should expect.
Thank you, Councilmember Purstuck. Yeah, Councilmember Drew.
Yeah, actually, I got a couple things. First one actually comes from a couple of residents that could not be here, back on the, on the Maple and Hillcrest area, back by the dunes. Actually, the question is, you have a, I guess, a primary clarification, there's a burn-off going on, kind of day and night at this point in time. As a matter of fact, I was just sent a photo that it's going on right now. So the question is, how long is that going to be going on?
So, Tim, can you address that, this question, please?
So, yeah, I was trying to get an understanding. On the primary tanks, that's just the, the amount of sludge that we stored for three weeks that had no outlet. And so, since August 1st, we've begun to draw that down and process those. And so that's why we, we believe by the end of the month, we will, we will get things finally resolved with that issue. So, as for the burn-off, I'm trying to understand that question, what that is. It may, it may be during, earlier in the process, when we were not able to generate enough gas because we were not moving the material, we did have some periodic flaring from time to time. And the power plant came on now, in, by noon on Friday, and so, all that, we're now directing the gas back to generating the power, which powers the plant. And so, that flaring component is gone.
So your expectation is sometime by the end of the week, hopefully, that will not be the case anymore. Is that, my understanding it correctly?
No, I'm saying, the pulling of this, three weeks' water solids out of these tanks, we do expect that the emissions that are coming from those will lessen and get to the point where we don't have them by the end of the month. The reason I'm saying that is, as we are pulling the material that we stored for three weeks, we also get the new material that is coming in. And so, that process takes a while. And then, because the scrub, our scrubbing units or air pollution control devices have been overloaded, so as we put, pulling that material down, the air pollution devices become more efficient. And so that's why we also believe you will continue to see the, the drop that was shown in those graphs will continue steadily, and we want to get it to the point where it's not noticeable at all.
Okay, thank you. So, first of all, thank you for the presentation, Barbara, and, et al. It was very comprehensive. I do appreciate you coming out here. One of the things you did mention in there is that you, you mentioned neighbors. I think one of the things that we really need to kind of realize here is that, we're your customer, not your neighbor, necessarily. We're neighbor just because you just happen to be there, but in general, we're your customer, and you hold a monopoly on a business. So, we have to kind of keep that in mind as what the true nature of our relationship is. I think it's important that everybody understands that. And that being said, I'd like to further discuss some actions being, to be undertaken to help the city and its residents. As you well know, and as you've heard this evening, we have faced over a month, our town literally smelling like an outhouse. Miserable conditions that have resulted in, amongst other things, nausea, skin rashes, headaches. And really, what you saw tonight, I mean, it was kind of heartbreaking with, with Ms. Kachuski, I think is how you pronounce her name. Fear of what is in our air. A fear of what is being used to clean the spill, fear of going outside, fear of what the long-term effects are. There's also going to be dramatic increases in electric bills for everybody in this town that were caused for having to close your windows and run air conditioning units and fans, literally 24/7. Not only for the past month, but probably for the next, at least till the end of this month. So that's significant, a significant expense that is unexpected. So, you know, while the hotel reimbursement and AC reimbursements, while appreciated, I don't think it goes far enough. And I, and I think you've heard a lot of that tonight. The reality for us in El Segundo is that this issue is not over. We don't know when it's going to be over. The smell lingers, the damage to our city and its residents has been done, and unfortunately, no amount of hotel stays or portable AC units can reverse that. Bottom line is, is that we need you to do more for us. The past year, we had to impose a huge increase to our residents for wastewater. Over the past several years, Hyperion has increased the cost of the city of El Segundo by 92%. This was played out over the past, I guess, maybe six, seven months in various meetings we've had here. We actually had to go out to the residents for a ballot measure, et cetera. So, these are increases that were unilaterally imposed on the city for the purposes of, and the irony here is, is interesting, infrastructure, capital improvements, that were meant to modernize the facility, make it cleaner, more efficient, and mitigate the smell. Quite obviously, we did not get what we paid for. As a result, I do feel that the account for the city, residents, business owners, should be zeroed out for a minimum of the next six months, as a way to compensate them, and us, for what we have gone through from a physical health, mental health, quality of life, and financial standpoint. That's what I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Drew. Would anyone like to address Councilmember Drew's comment? Also, I want to piggyback, because Lance touched on one of my questions, which is, knowing that we have this huge increase that we just had to pass on to our residents for wastewater and to the businesses, can we expect more? And Tim, I know I asked you this question when I was on-site with you last Wednesday. What more do you anticipate in terms of capital improvements if this redundancy planning, for lack of a better term, has not already been factored into the equation in terms of this capital improvement? So if you could first answer Councilmember Drew's concern about, I think your request was, you want to restate that one more time, the last part of that last?
Yeah, I mean, along those lines, bottom line is, is that, you know, if anybody, I'm sure, has gotten their wastewater bill the last couple of months, it is a dramatic increase. It's a dramatic increase for our businesses as well. So, if the reason why we were paying this dramatic increase is to avoid situations like just happened, then quite obviously, we invested in something that did not have a return. So what I'm asking for is to consider to zero out the accounts for about six months. I think that is a pretty fair way to initiate some kind of, you know, reimbursement for the suffering that we've gone through. Is it a big ask? Not really. Not when you consider what's, what we're going through right now. So, my request is to go above and beyond what you're doing, because as we've talked about, and as someone mentioned, you know, the hotels and air conditioning thing, you all said no to it at the beginning. That, that didn't happen overnight. So, let's, let's, you didn't do the right thing right away. You had to be coaxed into it. So, what I'm saying is, right now, we're going to be, and our residents are going to be faced with a lot more bills coming up that are going to be a result of this. And we need to address it, or we need you to help us address it.
So Lisa, yeah, Lisa, can you take these questions, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. Lisa Maori, L.A. San CFO. We are regulated both by the Federal Clean Water Act and the state constitution, Proposition 218, in how we bill for wastewater services that we provide. And so, those state and federal laws provide restrictions on how we do our billing. And so, the idea of being able to suspend or waive charges is something that would be regulated under both state and federal law, and that would severely limit our ability to approach this from that particular perspective, rather than looking at it from a perspective more around providing assistance and other types of things like that directly to the, the residents. So, we will continue to approach it from that direction and look at ways that we can help mitigate this, to, to try and provide relief without running afoul of, of the state and federal limitations. As far as future rates, as part of the recovery effort, we're looking and gathering data on what types of capital improvements may be needed. We, it's still preliminary at, at this point, we don't have a final number. I do believe that a lot of that work, we're going to be able to do within what we had already budgeted for our capital program. It may be more a case where we shift things around, and other projects, which can perhaps be deferred for a year or two, that may occur to free up capacity within our program to address some of the more immediate needs at Hyperion. So, I think the impact for future rates, again, while we, while we still don't have a full accounting of what that would, would be, there would probably not be large impacts to the, the rates.
But Lisa, can you address the issue of how the, we, the contract goes with the city, the city then determines how they want to recover the costs? We don't determine the percent of the increase to the customers. We have an agreement with the 29, 29 contract cities. I think that's an important point to address.
Right. We do the projections for what El Segundo's share of the costs are. El Segundo's percentage of flow that, that makes the Hyperion's flow is a little over half of, half of a percent. And so, when we go through and, and do the calculations to determine what the El Segundo share is based on the flow, the strength of the wastewater that gets sent to us, and that, in turn, goes to the city of El Segundo, that performs the specific rate setting for their customers on how that's, costs are going to be recovered in order to, to pay the bills.
Ms. Maori, one thing I heard also, that I think Tim stated, I think it was Tim when I was there, is that, that bodes well for us, is even if there are substantial capital improvements because of our proximity to the plant, we don't require as much share of the infrastructure, and that, that would benefit us from a cost standpoint in terms of what gets passed on. But I think what I heard Barbara saying was also that the, the city as a customer, one of 29 different agencies using Hyperion, can choose what to do in terms of absorbing the cost or passing that cost along. And just want to be clear that it is a huge number that we do not have the funds set aside for to absorb that cost. And so that's not really a practical solution for the city to take on. But I also want to note that, city attorney, you wanted to say something, Mark, is that right?
Yes, along with lines of Councilmember Drew's inquiry, and I understand what the city of L.A. is saying about Prop 218 and restrictions, but I would request you let the city manager and I review options. There's different ways that this fairness, if you will, can potentially be approached with the city of L.A. and the issues that you're raising, and other council members may share, that there are ways to potentially, again, come to some fairness arrangement over what's occurred in the city.
Okay, so the takeaway there is, Mark, the city attorney's office is going to work with in conjunction with the city manager in L.A. San to address the concerns?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Who would like to go next? Okay, Councilman Nickel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where do, where do I want to start here? Couple of questions. I'll, I'll start with this, this one. And Barbara, it'll, it's coming your way. Were any of your contract city customers affected by this catastrophic failure?
That, besides, not that we are aware of, in terms of, on the contrary, we're look, we're gonna, I think, we're gonna talk to them, and we have a meeting that is upcoming in October, to meet with all the contract cities and the agencies to, to talk about coordinating issues and other issues with our contract.
But why have you? Were, were, were any of your contract cities asked to stop flushing the toilet while you guys were unable to process the flow? Why? Why? I, I, I'm just, I don't understand, because even to this day, you know, Tim's saying that there's still, you know, solids that are trying to be moved, so that you're catching up, because the flow is still coming in. The flow is, so, I mean, this, I, the point I'm, I'm trying to get to is, the, the visit that I was on last Monday was very eye-opening to the magnitude of this failure and, and the snowball effect that the, the blockage at the headworks bar screen section of the plant ended up causing throughout the plant. And what I, like, in retrospect, what I don't understand is, why was that kept from the public? The story was the 17 million gallons that went into the ocean, that was the story. But no one talked about the catastrophic failure of the plant and the plant's inability to process any of the fluids and solids that were coming in, and the public was not asked at any point to, if it's yellow, let it mellow, just stop flushing your toilet, maybe take a shorter shower, like, help us, like, our plant is flooding. Every time you guys flush, the, the fluid is coming in, it's spilling into our streets. I, I just, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to understand the, the thought process and, and why, to this day, it still hasn't been asked of any of the contract cities. Because, and to go back to that first question, is, none of the contract cities have been affected. Because, and to go back to that first question, is none of the contract cities have been affected, except your neighbor. And same deal. We have not been asked to stop flushing our toilets. We have not been asked to do anything to help solve the problem. And yet, the primary burden of this currently, you know, there's a future burden, but the current burden of this catastrophe is falling on the residents of El Segundo. And so I'm just trying to understand all of that. There was a question somewhere in there, I promise. But...
So, yeah, can you repeat? I'm trying to answer. And I empathize and, you know, I feel like, you know, we need to get to the bottom of this. But I think, from my perspective, is we didn't ask anybody to not flush because we have the capacity to hold, to store the sludge. And it, you know, it was never anticipated that we, that it was going to take over three weeks to restore the facilities to its fully function operations.
But holding the sludge comes at a cost, not a financial cost, a cent, you know, a quality of life cost. And that's where I, you know, why it happened, whose fault it was, like, I'm not here looking to try to point a finger. I'm just trying to understand that if this happens again, like, what things would we do differently?
And that's what we are working on. First of all, we'll get a report from, you know, the regulators. But we're also working on a third-party assessment to get to that. We've already, we already know some things that we would do different on the operations front, on the notification front. And these recovery efforts, because it, as you saw, it was an emergency recovery for, you know, more than three weeks. So we, I hear you and, you know, I don't want to be in this place again. So I am, you know, the level of scrutiny is, you know, I'm here to internally tell you that we're internally scrutinizing ourselves because we take great pride in our facilities and that the scale of the work that happens there on a daily basis is critical to not only the city but to the region and to you guys as, you know, as customers that we see you as that, but also, more importantly, as our neighbors. Because the people that work there, over 400 people that live there, that work there, have to live with, you know, this as well. So they take great pride in that. And so I want to reassure you that, you know, we're not, you know, we feel incredibly frustrated by and challenged by the situation. And we, you know, like I said earlier, we want to improve those practices. And we, you know, I don't know how else to say that, you know, we, you know, I hear you.
Thank you. Now, speaking to you from a customer standpoint, everything that you're doing, the cleanup work, the 24-hour crews, the repairs, the new motors put in so the pumps can go, and all of the materials that are going to have to be replaced, it all comes at a cost. Where, does L.A. SAN have an emergency fund to cover this? Is this being loaned from another fund? Is this going to somehow, some way be repaid by your customers down the line? Because at the end of the day, Hyperion does a job that none of us want. And if you tour the plant, you realize that you really don't want that job. You do not, it's dirty. It's dirty, it smells, and I think, I speak for myself, but I probably speak for many residents, I want to flush my toilet and I want to move on with my day. And I don't want to think about it. And, but you guys think about it. And you guys have to think about it all the time. So I do, I understand that. But moving forward, what I don't want to see is, you know, either myself on this dais or a future council member on this dais talking about how we're going to have to raise our rates again because the cost to process our sewage has gone up. And why has it gone up? Well, because the spill cost an estimated, you know, $4 million in additional cost of repairs and cleanup and everything else, and that has to come from somewhere. So what guarantees do we have that it's not going to come from our backs? And yes, to your point, it is our choice as a city to pass that cost to our resident and your contract is with us as a city, not with our resident. But right now, the only contract city that is currently affected by this spill are those residents that are your neighbors. And so how can we ensure that those residents do not wear the smell of the spill on their backs and in their lungs and in their rashes and so on and so forth currently and wear it in their pocketbook moving forward?
So as you saw on the tour, one of the things we're trying to do is first, you know, repair, try to, instead of replacing first, and Tim and Lisa can speak more to this, but we're trying to repair as many of the pipes as possible and repair, you know, we're doing, we have our in-house crew that can do that. So we're looking at where we can, you know, where things can be recovered and some of the equipment we can save. We're looking at, you know, our insurance policies and looking at that as well. So we're taking all the avenues before we have to go into the pocketbook. That's my simplified version of our attempt. Because we understand, we, you know, we have a big part of this burden, of this financial burden. And we don't want to necessarily go to our contract agencies as well. So, but if Tim or Lisa want to elaborate more, please take the floor.
Sure. We are definitely pursuing the insurance policies that we have on some of the plant equipment. And hopefully, a significant part of the cost may be borne by those insurance policies. We do also have financial reserves that we'll be tapping into as necessary for the recovery area, the recovery costs. As we mentioned previously, we're still undergoing the recovery process. We're still looking at capital improvements that we may need to make in order to make the plant more resilient to flooding or other incidents like this in the future. And until we've got a little better information as far as what that may cost and what timeframe we're looking at, it's difficult to accurately predict what the financial impacts are. But we do have reserves and funding sources that I believe will be able to take care of the majority of this.
Thank you. And then, is the Department of Public Health on the call, Mr. Mitnick?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Who from the department is on the call? I see one person that just came off of...
Yes. So my name's Lisa Freyers. Good afternoon or good evening. And I'm the Director of Environmental Health with the Department of Public Health.
Hi, Lisa. How are you? Thank you for being on the call. Question, can you please explain to myself, my fellow council members, and the residents that are watching tonight? How can, how can L.A. Department of Public Health be notified an hour after the spill in the PM on the 11th and news not get out to the other agencies? How can you explain that? How can you protect us from that moving forward? It's, I sit here reading through this and I find it somewhat embarrassing because there were two inspectors on-site, on-site, two inspectors from the L.A. Department of Public Health at 9:30 PM on July 11th. Did they not tell anybody what they saw?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that I can say that will, you know, unfortunately, take away from the error that did occur. And that is, there should have been public communication. There should have been communication first to the city. The most important thing is really making sure that we close the beaches so that we don't have children going into the ocean waters and we don't have surfers in the waters. And so we take full responsibility for not doing the notification and the communication that we should have.
And is there any plan moving forward to try to correct that error?
Yes, there is definitely a plan moving forward. So, you know, hopefully you've already seen that plan being implemented. So you are receiving now public releases via directly to, you know, the city of El Segundo with respect to our ocean monitoring program. And we are also utilizing social media to make sure that we're, you know, getting that information out. Another thing that we're going to be implementing as a pilot project for the city of El Segundo, and that is notification to beachgoers as they enter the beaches to let them know whether or not there's either an advisory that's been posted, a warning because of exceedances to bacteria, or in the event of a sewage overflow that people know that the ocean waters are closed. So we are working on enhancing our notification so that consumers get that information. We also do post, and I want to make sure that we know, there's a lot of people that don't go to the website. For those who frequent beaches, they go to Heal the Bay, and they do frequent our website where we do have a map that does identify the water quality at our ocean, you know, at our shoreline. But we want to enhance that. And so we're looking at, how can we get information directly to your residents? And we're hoping to partner with you because we know that you have direct access to your residents. By looping you in right away, once we have notification, you'll be able to partner with us to get that out to your residents.
One more question for you.
Sure.
If this spill had not resulted in raw sewage going out to the ocean, would Los Angeles Department of Public Health have been involved at all?
We actually sampled, so part of our ocean monitoring program...
I don't mean for the ocean. I mean, ocean aside, let's say nothing goes in the ocean. The plant has, you know, a failure and sewage is spilling into the streets on their property. Do they have any requirement whatsoever to notify Department of Public Health that there's a serious event happening there?
Yes, they do have a requirement to notify the Department of Public Health. And as Ms. Romero stated, they did notify the Department of Public Health through Cal OES.
Okay. And then, to that end, who's responsible to communicate to the public the magnitude of the situation? Because again, going back in time, you know, it's, we're hearing things secondhand from people. I knew somebody who was on-site that day on that Monday, and it's like, wow, this is really bad over here. And we had not heard anything yet, right? Word was not out about how bad it was. And then the only word that came out was really that raw sewage went into the ocean. That was the story. Close the beaches. It's not safe. No one told anybody how bad, like, this is Chernobyl. This is Chernobyl.
I think as, you know, Ms. Romero stated, communication is something that I think a lot of us are going to be looking at as far as enhancing it. And so, you know, primarily, I think, working with, of course, you know, the plant to really come up with that communication that goes out to all residents. We through Public Health have, you know, responsibility to make sure that, you know, we're protecting your residents. And that's through communication. So I think that's one of the takeaways that, you know, historically, no, we probably, that's not necessarily something that we would do. We would rely on the responsible, you know, agency to do the notification. But that's some learnings that we can take from this and that, you know, we have to work together with not only, you know, the city as the plant who operates, but even with AQMD and the Water Board to really work on the communication piece so that we can communicate together on all the different aspects that need to be addressed, such as the monitoring, the air quality. What are we doing from a public health perspective? And making sure that the plant is able to address what they're doing to resolve the issues moving forward.
Yeah, I think that it needs to go into effect also what the populace can do to help. Here's the situation. Because at the end of the day, we just want to flush our toilet and not think about it. And so no one wants that job, but we all play a role in what's happening there, right?
No, I'm, yes, I appreciate that. And one of the things that we, you know, right away went out to is we developed a one-page sheet that we wanted to make sure that people understood, you know, what the situation was, their concerns related to odor. So we did have a team go out and try and get in front of the community to make sure that they knew, you know, exactly what they were coming into contact with, whether they were smelling it, and making sure that they knew who to contact for that assistance. So we definitely want to make sure that we're always responsive to you, to the public, and really provide them with what they need so that they can protect themselves.
Thank you. And then Barbara, I just have something for you and your team before I pass this off, Mr. Mayor. We're here, we're doing a little post-mortem talk. We're talking about what could have been, what it could have happened, what we should have done. Because you need to hear it. The public has been communicating to us and we need to communicate to you. That's how this flow of information works. At the end of the day, we need you and your team to continue to work very, very hard to resolve this issue and clean up the plant and eliminate that smell as soon as humanly possible. So I want to say thank you for your efforts. I want to say continue the hard work. Keep those crews working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And, yeah, the sooner you can get this resolved, the better life will be for any of your neighbors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Nickel. Mayor Proton Pimentel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I didn't realize that Public Health was on here. And to that end, I think what's really difficult, I'll start there, is that in the past 16 months, the Department of Public Health for the county has routinely cast aside and dismissed every piece of input we've had for them on a bevy of issues. And yet, when we needed them on an environmental issue, that they could be so woefully negligent. Negligent. I mean, that individual, I read the report, that individual did not come to work on Monday, who was the last person in this chain of communication. So I know that you're here to catch the slings and arrows. I know it's not you. But to say that our rapport with Public Health is not one that imbues us with a tremendous amount of confidence would probably overstate it. So when we do get around to correcting these forms of communication, ideally, it will someday become a two-way form of communication instead of us knowing we can't eat on benches outside restaurants and then no one telling us that our kids are swimming in filth. So I will leave that as it is. I do have a question for Hyperion. Do we have someone at the facility who is dedicated to disaster management and preparedness?
Yes, we do. We always have a chief superintendent on-site who's the incident commander. And we have a structure where we coordinate with, say, for example, the fire department at LAX. In this instance, we did what was in our permit, but that was woefully inadequate. And we're learning from that going forward.
Excuse me, I don't mean to cut you off too much. I don't mean an incident commander. I mean someone who's in charge of drafting policies, exercising tabletops. I mean, because I'm hearing here that our facilities are not waterproof at this point. We are in a tsunami evacuation zone. You are in the shadow of the great earthquake we all prepare for. And you are a plant designed to capture a half-billion gallons of sewage a day at peak capacity. And the facility is not waterproof and the overflow screens on the bulkhead cannot be lifted. Is someone planning for these and exercising these events? Or is this, you know, the proverbial bomb threat policy that sits on a shelf that no one looks at? Because it feels that way.
So, yeah, regretfully, it does look that way, but I want to assure you that we have processes in place. So for example, on the bulkhead situation, it was a question of where we thought we had enough time. We had a procedure, we had a crane specifically designed to be able to lift that bulkhead. So we thought we had enough time. But now in retrospect, we're going to, those are one of the changes that we're going to make, do, make going forward. So for example, we're looking at how we could, say, set a threshold where if it's one feet or two feet or whatever that distance is before an overflow, we trigger the crane and lift the bulkhead. So we don't want, we don't wait for it getting to the very edge, thinking that we had enough time. So things like that, we're going to go back and review all our standard operating procedures. We're going to work with the regulators... We're gonna work with the regulatory agencies. Uh, we do have uh a, a safety uh department within um. L S sanitation that is housed here at Hyperion. And we'll work with all the entities involved from public health to fire department to the city of El Segundo in looking at. All our practices and how we can uh improve things. Uh, I can tell you that we had looked at things from a tsunami standpoint of view and looked at. Uh, Vista Del Mar as a buffer between us and, and the walls that we had. And we, in, in terms of planning and priorities, we thought we had more time in, in terms of. How we would shore up those outside facing doors into, into the uh underground tunnels. Um, now looking at what has happened, we, we're gonna go back and revise all, all our thought processes and we. We're gonna get the input from the experts and everybody to look at how we can. Uh, look at. Doing things going forward, knowing that there's gonna be sea level rise maybe more than we thought i- i- in the past. So all those things are gonna be figured into the process by which we. Uh, build more resiliency because um this is a facility that we cannot have knocked offline. Uh, and, and we do know that and we're gonna continue to work to ensure that that resiliency is, is built into the process.
I, I would say fundamentally, you, you need to rehearse these events. You need to run real rehearsals of those events and, and we would like to be a part of those rehearsals. We do it with all of our other partners, our police, our fire, our certs, our disaster preparedness people. With all of our other neighbors, whether we do it in the Boeing control room, the Chevron control room, whether we do it at our own little radio station, which we love. We do these rehearsals and we do them for a reason. There's a reason we succeed with civil disturbance, we succeed with pandemics. These things are with things that we rehearse. I would implore you, you need to rehearse them and make people run the ground and see what it takes to do this specific events. In case you see the graph do this, where you have an overflow and a level rise and a suction drops, you know, there's a big glob of goo coming down there. You need to rehearse those things and please let us be a part of those. Because we can help. And we shouldn't be here on the other side of the table from you. We should be on the same side of the table with you. Because we can help in these things. So please, please, please do that.
Yeah, I do appreciate your comment. Now we will certainly do that. Uh, those are great comments. Thank you for that.
Well, I would say further to it, and this dovetails a bit on Councilmember Nichols' comments that. Everyone read this as seventeen million gallons go out to sea and then we turn the page. And I would say there's a second part of these disasters and that is the coordination to our neighbors and friends. And I don't mean necessarily telling the city of El Segundo. But I know that there are neighbors in here who did not know. L A County Sanitation was unaware that you needed help. Right? That is a huge entity next door that does the exact same thing that you do. The city of El Segundo should not be driving those conversations. And I don't know, and, and there's, there's a question here, I'm sure, but. I mean, how could they not know? Like, how, why, w- w- who, who were you asking for help from when this occurred? To try and speed this thing up? Or were you trying to do it all yourself? It feels like you're trying to do it all yourself. And there's plenty of people who can help in these regards.
Yeah, you are, oh, you are exactly right. And, and that's part of the lessons going forward. Um, we did try to do it with the resources that we had. And, and then uh further on, uh, we did reach out to. Uh, L A County Sanitation districts actually reached out to us and, and we did take the help from them. And we still have some of their equipment on site and staff that is helping us uh with the recovery process. But you are indeed right that. Um, we, we need to look at how we call upon. Our neighbors and uh, and other institutions to help us in terms of uh when we, we truly have the need. So, and, and rehearsing the process and having everybody integrated so that. It becomes seamless when we, when, when we face a disaster is something that. We will look at and, and work towards uh achieving.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I, I, I know I probably come off as frustrated. Some of this is because I am. Uh, you know, your, 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 the, the. Air detection at Maple and Hillcrest is near and dear to my heart because it's about forty-five feet from my front door. Uh, so uh, you know, I live in the land of, of, of don't turn your stove on because you think your house is gonna explode. Um, so, so these things are immediate uh in the concerns. Uh, I, I would say, I know A Q M D was on here. They said they, they had isopropanol readings. Uh, so that leads me to, to, you know, my chemistry one-on-one question. Are you using isopropyl alcohol as a cleaning solution in your, in your facility?
Uh, we use bleach, but right now we, we, we're not, I, I'm not aware of that. We'll, we'll look into that. Uh, we're also gonna look at the uh deodorizers that we spray, whether, and toxin manufacturer, whether that ingredient is ingrained in there. It's not apparent from. The safety data sheet that we're looking at. Uh, but we'll do further investigation on that.
Yeah, if you look through and those MSDS's say it is not there, I would urge you to put that out there because residents are gonna launch onto that. Latch onto that with a valid concern of. There's an airborne toxin or an airborne detection that A Q M D has and you say you are not using. If that is an, an errant signal. That's something that we need to know to clear that up because people are going to be concerned about it. So that is a, a sort of a, a cautionary note. Uh, that, that I hope you can take on. If there's anything that you uh at minute ninety. And the second to last guy up, think take, it's please remember. As big an entity as you are, one of us are only as good as all of us here, right? So use your neighbors. Whether it's L A County Sanitation or us to help. And let us prepare, let us prepare, let us prepare. The next big disaster could be much bigger than this. And, and you know, we just can't have, we can't have, you know, fifty-four pumps flooded. In a water treatment plant. I mean, it's crazy. So, so let us help, let us be a part of the solution, but please plan for it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Pimentel. A good segue for me when it relates to Mayor Protem's question about contingency planning and disaster recovery. We have done a fair amount of that with different parties in town, Chevron, et cetera. We've done our own. Where we had every department head, every council member. We would welcome that opportunity to do that with you at the Air Force Base, with D W P, with. N R G and all the industrial complexes in town. The thing that blew my mind being at that plant. Was that. It felt like, Tim, you and your counterpart, I can't remember the gentleman's name. Yeoman's effort, by the way. I know you're there at all hours. You're doing four to five feet of wastewater in some cases. That you all were figuring it out on the fly. That there was not a. Contingency planning, what if flow chart, process chart, whatever you want to call it. That says if this happens, then do this. And that, that weren't more fail safes in place. It blows my mind. Having worked on military aircraft in the eighties that troubleshoot themsel- selves. And would sometimes even fix themselves. That in this era of twenty twenty-one. There aren't more, there isn't more automation and more redundancy in place. And if there is. I don't think we were privy to it during our tour. I just can't fathom that there weren't considerations of what if, what could go wrong? Uh, I think there's the tsunami you mentioned, you planned for that. So similar to Mayor Protem, I would implore you to consider any and all scenarios that could happen. And develop those plans because. A lot of this could have been averted. I think if we had thought it through, as we've heard several times, hindsight's twenty twenty. Well, let's anticipate a little bit better. And then that leads me to talking about anticipating and as it relates to communication. One thing we talk about often in our city is we have to do a better job of anticipating our residents and our businesses' concerns rather than reacting them, reacting to their concerns. Scott and I talk about this all the time. This, we have not done a good job in my estimation, and I'm not talking about the city. I'm talking about. Hyperion and L A City Sanitation District specifically, the county, A Q M D. And anticipating our residents' concerns. And one specific example of that is if you look back at the last forty-eight hours, if you reflect the last forty hours, the smell. Has significantly gone up. Would you guys all agree on the council? I know I smell it in my neighborhood on Whiting Street. Yet we haven't communicated anything to our residents or businesses about why the smell is going up. So if, Tim, it's because your digesters are back online and you're processing that sludge now. Which is great, waste to energy component of the plant. Then let's communicate that. Let's anticipate when things are about to go sideways. And proactively communicate rather than. Reacting to these concerns. Because that, what happens tonight is that people come up, they don't have the information, they're frustrated. So along those lines. I'm hearing a lot, and I'm sure my colleagues are too, that there, there's mistrust. And the mistrust, I'm talking about the A Q M D right now specifically. Our residents do not believe that the air quality. Is safe. So if the air quality is safe and you feel firmly definitively and you have the authority to make that judgment, you're gonna stand there before us as a true third party and say the air quality is good. Then we better do a better job of proving that to our residents because they don't believe it right now. It's just, it's not believable. So I would ask you to, I don't know if the A Q M D is still on. I don't see the gentleman that was on. So maybe somebody, is there someone else up there that could relay this to the A Q M D or Scott? Can you get this, impress this point upon the A Q M D? That I think D P H, Environmental Health, A Q M D needed.
Councilmember, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, I think we need to do a better job of getting the message out there. If we, if we truly believe that the air quality is safe. Let's make sure our residents believe it too. Let's make it believable. Cause right now, they're not. They're not believing that.
So our results are on the website um as, as soon as it was finalized. Um, the. The community monitoring is reporting data in real time. Uh, both at the fence line at the Chevron facility as well as our community monitor at Saint Anthony's Church. So uh, that information has been uh made publicly.
No, I understand. And one thing I also tell staff, or we talk about all the time, is it's not enough to put the information out there. Communication is about ensuring it's actually heard and understood. And so if it, it's not enough to just say, we're putting the information out there, is. Do the residents know it and do they believe it? So there, there is a credibility gap, whether or not we want to believe it or not. Right now, there is a credibility gap. So. How are you as an agency going to assure our residents the air quality is actually safe and our businesses? And I don't expect you to answer this on the spot right now, sir. I'm just saying, this is an issue. And it's going to continue to linger. No pun intended, until we resolve it directly and believably.
Understood. Well, um, and as you may or may not know, we are working with um Hyperion. In terms of uh working on some air monitoring plans um that uh they um would be working on. So we're providing that technical guidance. For that uh communication of air quality uh and uh with them to collaborate on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think it would also go a long way to say. El Segundo residents, we hear you loud and clear. There, here's the things you've been asking for and here's what we're doing about it. That would go a long way as well. Councilman Nickel.
And the location of uh the monitor at Saint Anthony's Church. It's. I, I mean, it's as, pretty much as far as you can possibly get from the Hyperion or from where Tim says the solids come in, where the smell is generated from. And so I think it would go a long way if A Q M D would make an effort to either install a second. Uh, site. Here in El Segundo. Uh, I'm sure there's plenty of residents on the west side of town that would volunteer their backyard or back patio. Uh, to have that placed there so that A Q M D can see exactly what it's all about.
Thank you, Councilman Nickel. And Mr. Low, you do have one, Mayor Protem just reminded me that you have one, a temporary one on Hillcrest. Is that correct?
Our permanent monitoring is over at that Saint Anthony's Church. Um, any of the uh fence line monitoring um with, for hydrogen sulfide. Uh, is being conducted um by the uh readings that are being collected by Hyperion staff. And then the other uh network that is nearby is the Chevron fence line network. So those are. The uh air monitoring, ongoing air monitoring that I am aware of.
Uh, two, two weeks ago, I think there was a temporary one put in Oak and Hillcrest. And that might be the, the, now we're calling Maple and Hillcrest, but it was up there two weeks ago.
Thank you. All right.
I just have one comment, you know, we, we were talking about proactive communication. Yet again, there's a town hall that's tomorrow, that we as a city were notified about it today. So once again. I'm, I'm not sure if your staff or if you're not listening, that we really need to be proactive in our communication. But I know there's a town hall tomorrow and the fact that we're just notified about it today. Because we got an email from Scott about it this afternoon. You know. Why is that? Like, I, once again, you know, proactive communication is a responsibility regardless of. I know modes of communication have changed, but the responsibility of an, of an agency to proactively communicate their, to their. To their, a res- to the residents and to their consumers. Has not changed over many, many years. And that responsibility lies on you guys.
Sir, one last thing. So just so I make sure I understand this correctly. So the monitoring that's being done at Hyperion for air quality is being done by hand by Hyperion staff. Is, am I correct on that? There's no A Q M?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, so is it just me or does someone see a potential issue with that? Your self-monitoring and. With all due respect, I think at this point in time, um, with what's gone on, I, I would think you'd be willing to submit to a, a, a third party. Kinda sort of third party. Um, to have uh A Q M D monitors on that fence line. Doesn't that make a lot of sense right now with what's going on? I mean, this whole discussion tonight. And really what, what uh Mayor Boyle's just talked about is that this community does not trust anything that's coming out of there. So if we have an independent monitoring process for what's coming out of Hyperion. Maybe that trust gets built back up, but right now, I can guarantee you, you ask anyone out there, they don't trust your handheld readings. I'm not saying you're lying, I'm saying there's no trust. So right now, it's got to be the right time to do this.
Yeah, we'll continue to work with A Q M D on that. What we've also done um is. We, we've looked at our handheld monitoring, but we've also been using what, what we see out of Saint Anthony's as, as a way. Of guiding or validating what it is that we're doing. So we'll continue to work with A Q M D. Uh, towards uh looking at the best path forward in, in addressing the community's concern. But we, we definitely hear your concerns.
Is there, is there any reason why the answer should be no? Or could be no? That's all I'm looking for. Is, is there any reason why anyone from Hyperion could tell me right now that, no, 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 this is a bad idea to have this? You mentioned Saint Anthony's, I get that, but that's an awfully far, a, a long distance away from, from where you're at. And, and the problem isn't over right now at Saint Anthony's. The problem is. At your fence line.
So, yeah, so we, we, we are working on this general assessment and as, as part of what comes out of this general assessment. Is the best path forward in terms of completely addressing this issue. So we do know for one that pulling down this uh sludge that we hold in. That should uh address the immediate concern right now. As for a long-term strategy, uh, once we, we, we complete this assessment that's been done and the assessment. Also, we're bringing in a, a third party as uh was mentioned earlier in, in this presentation. So all those things combined with A Q M D and the other regulators will, will come up with, with, with the best uh path solution towards. Comprehensively addressing the issues for the community.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Nickle. Mr. Boyle, is, would it be too much for us to just ask A Q M D to set up temporary?
Uh. No, that's what I think would.
Sites on the west side of town?
Yeah, I think that's what Councilmember Giroux is getting at, yeah.
I mean, if they can't be in the plant currently. Yeah, I, I feel like a little bit of resistance there and that's fine. So we'll go around the resistance. And then we can go to A Q M D because they're an agency that. Is here to help us. And say, can you please set up temporary testing sites on the west side of town?
Yeah.
Help to build back this trust. Help our residents understand and believe that it's safe to breathe the air. I don't, I don't think that's asking too much and uh, you know, Mr. Low from A Q M D, is that something that? Tonight, could you, one, agree to that? Two, put that into action? And three, give us some sort of timeline as to when that would go into effect?
Um, so what I can say is that we've committed to help L A Sands uh develop a fence line network as, as mentioned by other council members and, and um. And uh public, knowing what's at the fence line gives a, a stronger understanding um of what we'd, we'd be going through. So. Uh, that's something that we've committed working uh with. Um, with Tim and Director Romero and the team. Um, we've uh already meant to provide some of that technical guidance and we look forward to working with them. Uh, as they develop their, their long-term plans for uh air monitoring.
But what does that do for me today? That, that, that's postmortem. I get it. That, that's in that category over there. But we're talking about right now, today. The, the, the event and the event is still occurring technically because the plant is not. One hundred and ten percent back online and they have not moved all the sludge from the storage that they provided. So again, why, why would, to Councilmember Giroux's words, why would the answer from you right now be no?
So I, I will say that, you know, South Coast A Q M D, you know, monitoring is one of the tools in the toolbox. Uh, we are um consistent of, of other tools which include, uh, as I mentioned before. Um, same inspectors that we have on site and responding to complaints. So. Uh, we do have a presence in the community to be able to understand kind of that boots-on-the-ground uh philosophy. And we have others on the team who may want to speak more to that. Um, but you know, we are in the community. We are also working with the facility. Uh, we did the um measurements at the times when we expect. Um, to see the strongest response for, for. We did the measurements at the times when we expect to see the strongest response for, for, for air toxics. So we did the mobile measurements to, to confirm at the time that there were not air toxics at, at levels that were outside of what we consider typical ambient during the times when odors were present. So those are, those are things that we've cleared in terms of looking at the odor. And the focus then would be to have, you know, working with LA Sands and the Hyperion facility for the fence line monitors. So we have that information to provide. And, and again, you know, it's, it's kind of what we do as a, as a larger response and, and how we have a presence in the community as well as at the facility.
But you, but you can't tell me what was in the smell last night. Right? And you can't tell me what's in the smell right now on the west side of town.
So that's why we use our surveys to, to have an indicator, to see what kind of chemicals are associated with the smell. We did that mobile monitoring and we also took the collection of the, of the canister samples, which we had a full laboratory analysis for. So, you know, at, at the point of knowing what chemical compounds are associated with the odor, we're looking from a gases or toxics point of view. You know, I think we're, we've have an understanding that we don't see any associated air toxics. But I mean, the, the primary issue at hand is, is the hydrogen sulfide, which is seeing the elevated levels. You know, even through the, the readings that are taken at the fence line. So that's something, you know, they're working on to, to look at options. And we support a quick deployment of, of that option and are providing that technical guidance to, to enact that. We've, we've been pulling up to make sure that they have everything in need from us and more, so.
But are you only here to serve the Hyperion plan? Or are you also here to serve the men and women and residents of El Segundo?
So as you saw, we did our mobile surveys throughout the, throughout the community, specifically talking about monitoring in the communities nearby the facility, all through El Segundo. We have the community air monitoring site that's being run at, at St. Anthony's Church. And we have a larger response of the team that goes out to respond to complaints and, and, you know, and resolve any facility corrective actions that needs to be done from the air quality agency's point of view.
I, I don't know. I, I feel like I'm getting the same answer no matter what question I ask. So if, if I'm on the west side of town right now and my mouth feels funny because I think there's something in the air that I'm breathing, who do I call?
So we have a number, 1-800-CUT-SMOG.
So the answer is you, I call you. So I'm calling you right now. You're on this Zoom call and, and I'm here and I'm calling you right now to say, there's something in the air on the west side of town in El Segundo right now that doesn't seem right.
Sure.
What do you do? You send somebody out?
1-800-CUT-SMOG will notify a person. And we have Terrence Mann, who also has showed up on the screen to kind of walk through that process. So I'll pass it over to Terrence to describe that process and the response for that.
Good evening, Councilman, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Yes, sir. So I, I mean, I think to answer your earlier question, we certainly serve and support the, the people of El Segundo. We take very seriously our role in protecting the health and safety of, of your community and as well as all the other communities within our jurisdiction. Now, with respect to what happens, if, if we smell something, you know, we ask residents to call 1-800-CUT-SMOG or go to our website and enter a complaint. At that point, our inspectors who have, I would note, responded to, I believe, over 1,800 complaints so far in the community, will, will contact your residents, follow up as soon as we can. And, you know, when appropriate, take enforcement action as we did here. I, I think part of what Dr. Low was getting at earlier is that the monitoring program follows the enforcement team. And so when we go out into the community, we identify odors, we, you know, evaluate processes and, and chemicals and, and compounds at issue. And it's from there that monitoring is set up. We, we don't go backwards and simply just place it somewhere. And I would note that for the most part, something like this would require, you know, basically a fence line monitoring system. We're, we're not going to solve this or we're not going to protect the community just with a single box. I think Dr. Low could, could get into detail on that. But I'll just note, that's why we are working with LA Sands to try to help them expedite and implement a fence line monitoring system and one that will be permanent and be there to protect the residents of your community.
So when people are getting sick from breathing the air, as they are currently, at what point and what agency should they look to? Should they look for us as the city council of El Segundo to say, don't worry, the air is safe? The guy on the screen from AQMD said that, you know, it's safe, it's fine while they're getting sick? Who do they turn to? You have residents that if you, if you had your data or if you shared your data with us as to when those 1,800 complaints came in, I mean, our residents are suffering from burnout. They've called AQMD on repeat for weeks. They're over it, they're done, they can't do it anymore. Right? They're tired. And so if the only response they're going to get is that they keep calling, at some point, we as a council can't continue to tell them, hey, I know you have a job, I know you have kids and hey, I know your house smells really bad and you're running your AC 24 hours a day and you're worried about your electric bill. But hey, in your free time, please call AQMD and continue to make those complaints. Because the complaints are the only thing that's going to get them out here. Do you understand my concern?
I, I do, sir. And, and, and I would just say, I know it's hard, I know it's hard for you, I know it's hard for members of the community. But I would encourage them, your residents, to keep calling, to keep entering those complaints. I know it's tough and it's a sacrifice, but that's how this process works. We have to be hand-in-hand with the community. And I, I think comments that you made earlier and your colleagues make a lot of sense in terms of all the agencies can do a better job of working together to communicate with a clear message. So when you ask who is the one to talk to? Part of it is South Coast AQMD, part of it is LA County Department of Public Health and, and other agencies depending on the particular issue. I, I think we can work together, together to better message this and to help you communicate with, with your residents. I mean, I, I think that, that is, I, I think the, the most important takeaway from this, from our perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. I just got one thing, Carolyn, I know you're close to the button, you want to say something. Since we have all of you on this call, and I hope all of you have your microphones on and you can hear what I'm saying. Every single one of you from these different agencies is saying how all these agencies need to work together and this agency this and this agency that. How about all of you get on a call tomorrow and figure out collectively what you are going to do for the residents of El Segundo to build confidence in their ability to walk outside and take a deep breath? Because right now, like what we're getting from this, I don't think we're any closer or any further down the road than we were before this meeting, based upon the responses we're getting. Everyone's kicking the can, it's going around in a circle. We get similar answers to different questions. But you guys are all here and you guys can all work together and put your heads together and say, okay, what can we do for the residents of El Segundo to make them believe in us as agencies that their tax dollars pay for? That would be my request. I can't make the request for all of them, but it is my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perstak.
Yeah, as to my earlier point, I'm just not sure why private sector companies like Chevron is held to a different standard when, you know, they were mandated, they, they put that fence line monitoring on and why we didn't, why our public agencies aren't doing the same proactively. And to Scott's point, like, it's now been over about a month and we still don't have it. And like the tracking didn't start for, for 14 days after the incident happened. So I, I just, I really struggle why government agencies feel that they should not be held to the same standards as private sector. And that's a mistake. And I think, you know, to Scott's point, you know, you guys all need to talk to each other and understand, you know, you, you should be, you're, you're, you're a service organization and we are your consumers. And unfortunately, you have a monopoly on, on sewage, so we have no other way to turn. But you, we are your consumers and you need to ensure that you are operating and treating us like consumers.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Perstak. Any further comments? Okay. I just want to say thank you for being here. And I want to say that I'm grateful that we have such an engaged group of residents and policymakers here that care a lot, that are super thoughtful and good listeners and doing their best to address our residents' and businesses' concern and the staff as well. Scott, your staff has been really responsive in dealing with this and, and creative and everything else. So thank you. And to all of you on the call, we look forward to hearing more. And I, I think I'm going to reiterate what Councilman Nichols said there is that we would like you to all get together and come back to us with your ideas after you've digested everything that we have put forth this evening. So anything, Mr. Mitnick, that you want to say to staff or to the agencies that are here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I, I know it's been a long evening and the stress and frustration that you feel. The folks on the, on the screen there, they, they feel the same way. There's been a lot of stress and it's been reflected here tonight. I'd just like to reiterate, there absolutely was a lack of communication early on. You've articulated that. The folks on the screen have accepted responsibility, they acknowledge that. Hindsight's 2020. When the incident happened on July 11th, yes, we all agree, the city of El Segundo should have been contacted. It was very frustrating as your staff, we could not answer questions for you that you were hearing after Supervisor Janice Hahn had contacted the mayor. It did take too long, we all, we all agree. But once that contact was made with us, which was Thursday, July 15th, that, that's when Elias and I actually had contact with the folks from Hyperion. Now, looking back, hindsight's always 2020. The Hyperion plant manager that was there for many years had recently retired. And so there was a little bit of a gap there and the communication with us was lacking. But once the communication was established and we were able to figure out as your staff, through this incredible alphabet soup of regulatory agencies and LA City departments, once we made those connections, once I got through to the, the new sanitation department director, Barbara Romero, she had been on the job, I think, was it five days or a couple of weeks in that role? She had been with the department for a while, but as the director, once we established that contact, the communication opened up. And then LA was very responsive in listening to the requests that were coming in from El Segundo in terms of working with the residents, helping them with hotels and the air conditioning stuff. And, and there's been millions of dollars put on the table for El Segundo residents. And you saw in the presentation, just under 2,900 applications have come in from El Segundo residents. And many of those applications will be acted on and payments will go out. It's a small step, but it's a step. I'm not trying to defend or argue for or against anybody, but they were responsive when the chips were down ultimately to helping us get through this. There's a long way to go, there's a lot of lessons learned. Major lesson here, major takeaway for everybody is when something like this happens, the city of LA in general, Hyperion in particular, has to reach out and notify El Segundo right away. To the Mayor Protem's comments earlier about you have an emergency plan. It wasn't adhered to, we all agree that that didn't happen. But in the future, when this happens, our counterparts have to call us right away, even if it's just one minute. Hey, this is what's happened. We may have to close the beach. And as I've shared with our, our colleagues in the city of LA, they may own the land, they may be responsible for the facility and it's, it is their responsibility. But it's our community and we have the communication network here. Through our elected officials, your professional staff and our media protocols, we have the ability to get the word out to our residents immediately. So we've learned that, that's a major lesson. We have the present and we have the future, we're all committed, council, all of us as, as your public servants. We all serve, all these agencies, we all serve the same public. So we're committed to working together. Now, going forward, we will have, the mayor had, had talked to me today about putting on the agenda, every council meeting going forward until this issue is resolved, the beginning of our meeting, we'll have an update on the Hyperion recovery. So we'll use this mechanism, this meeting format to get the word out. Our residents are encouraged to continue to go to our website and look at our social media platform, our channels every day for the latest official information. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you're agreeable to it, we'll, we'll do that. I'll continue to work with Ms. Romero, she's the main person for us to, to work with. And we'll share information with you and, and the community on a regular basis. There's a lot of follow-up from today, I took some very good notes. We'll do that, I'll have a summary. I will be talking with Mrs. Romero tomorrow morning and we'll come up with a game plan and we'll share it with you and the community. Sorry for my long-winded comments, but I hope that's helpful.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're just getting started on the count, three and a half hours in on Hyperion and it was necessary. So thank you to my colleagues and staff on that and to the agencies involved. All right, we're on to a procedural motions. Read all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Would someone like to make a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only?
So moved, Pimentel.
Thank you.
Nickel's second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Here. Did I, oh, she, sheets threw me off, it's Carol's fault. Yes, sorry. Thank you. Consent calendar, are there any polls for items four through 11? No, great, do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Jeru, so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Perstak, second?
Great, Madam Clerk, would you please do a voice vote?
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Here, just kidding, yes. All right, we're on to a public hearing. Item 12, adopt a resolution certifying the 2020 urban water management plan with the recommendation to open the public hearing, receive all written and verbal testimony and adopt the resolution approving the quintennial 2020 urban water management plan. This is a time and place here to fix for a public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given in a timely manner?
Yes.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No.
Great, all right, public hearing is now open. Mr. Mitnick, will you make the presentation?
Our public works director, Elias Assen.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This resolution simply certifies that the water provider, which is the city of El Segundo, has adequately planned to provide sufficient supplies of water to its users for the foreseeable future and during emergencies. I have Mr. Ryan Bray with the consulting firm of risk management professionals online. If there are any questions, the staff recommends the approval of, of this item and execution of the, of, and adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. All right, that was the conclusion of the presentation, it sounds like, right? Just available, consultants available for questions, should they come up? Thank you. Okay, public hearing is now open for public input. Madam Clerk, is any, there anyone on attendance via Zoom that would like to address this item?
No, there is not.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Perstak, so moved.
Thank you.
Jeru's second.
Thank you. Voice vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Yes. Okay, any council discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
So Elias, you said for the foreseeable future. You know, we have some proposed construction sites with some apart, you know, apartments on the commons, the Pacific Commons, and then with the SB nine and SB 10 bills that are in, the, in, you know, at the state level. You know, what does the foreseeable future mean if we are now, if we have required to inclu, include, increase our density within El Segundo? And like, where is our breaking point?
Good question. When, when this report was put together, it was including the, the foreseeable future expansion and new developments that, that are going to either relocate to El, to El Segundo or come to El Segundo. So that, that was part of the report. And the system is so efficient that we'll be able to accommodate all these newcomers and, and will have plenty of capacity to even do more.
So I, can, can you give us a, like a, like what is, what's the amount of the newcomers? Like what, you know, 1,000 residents, 2,000 residents? Is there a number? Is there? I mean, I just, I, I, it just seems so ambiguous to me, I just would like to understand it.
Right. So I'm gonna... Right. So I'm gonna respond and then of course, Ryan is, is online. He can, he can add on to that. But the general plan for the, for the city is, is already on the records and all the future developments based on the zoning is, is already included on the general plan and, and this plan is, is based, based on that. Now, with the new, with the new information and the new change in, in policies, you know, which, which allows a single lot to be divided into, for example, four lots, well, that's, that's somewhat new. But knowing the system and knowing the, the factor of safety that is used in preparation of these reports in terms of pressure and in terms of, of being of the output, I have no doubt that we'll be able to accommodate all those, all those change, changes as well. Now, you know, above and beyond that, Ryan, you're on the line. Would you like to add, add to this, to the, to my answer?
The only thing that I would add to this, that in addition to the efficiency of the city, we have looked at your water supplier, West Basin Municipal Water District, who has confirmed that they should be able to provide sufficient water for an increasing population, for increasing population and increasing water demands. So all of that goes hand in hand.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further council discussion? Oh, Councilman Giroux.
Yeah, I got one. So, question. So with, of course, heading right back to the Hyperion incident, like I said, this is the gift that keeps on giving. With the recent troubles that the Hyperion incident, one of the things that I learned at my little tour last week was that Hyperion has been part of the business model is to send treated water over to West Basin. And that treated water has now turned into potable water, which we use for irrigation and all, all the other things that it's used for. However, the water that was being sent over was partially treated, that contained an awful lot of sediment and West Basin then had to cut that water with drinking water in order to make it acceptable to be used as potable water. So what has this done to our drinking water supply? Especially in the light of the recent reports that came out on Monday about water cuts for the Colorado River, were declared for the first time in our history. So while I understand that this report, because I, I did read the staff report on this, it's a 2020 report, and the gist of the report is to show successful conservation efforts that may yield, you know, opportunities for grants and loans and things like that. But with these recent events, I think we're staring down the barrel of another problem. So has this been?
Can I throw one, one curve ball in that? And that, that, that 44 million gallon that goes to West Basin is recharge. So we use that, that goes all to, to form the, effectively the barrier that keeps the saltwater intrusion. So does it mix with the potable water supply? Unless I'm totally wrong, Elias, you can cut me off anytime you want. But it shouldn't, it will impact the non-pot irrigation water, but it wouldn't necessarily impact the per capita calculation of this, I don't think.
Yeah, a hundred percent. You are absolutely correct. And, and, and that, to that end, on top of what, what you just said, Mr. Mayor, the, the, the amount of water that we have is, is sufficient as, as was indicated based on, on the projected populations and developments. And, and is really, it goes through a lot of scrutiny. In order to prepare these reports, you know, they, they assume a lot of things. They, God forbid, there's fire going on in, in some parts of town and then at the same time, people are drawing a lot of water. Still, we have plenty of capacity and pressure in order to be able to accommodate all those testing. So as, as was indicated, the Hyperion situation has nothing to do with this drinking portable water. We are in, in good shape and I don't believe there is any, anything to worry about. Now, we, we are trying to conserve as much water as we can. It is on our website. It is at this stage. It is voluntarily done at this time. We urge all our, our citizens to, to try to, to use as little water as, as they possibly could. This is volunteer, voluntarily done. So we hope that it doesn't go beyond and above that. But if it does, we will, we will let the public know and we will, we will act accordingly.
I think what Councilmember Giroux is, is on to though, and it's, it's, it's separate but distinct from this, and we'll probably have to have this conversation, is that water is probably going to be a lot more expensive by exactly the factors he's talking about, right? If we have, if the, a dearth of recycled water due to the non-pot stuff or the recharge, I don't know how much West Basin spent to supplement and cut their water, but it had to be tens of millions of dollars with water to do that. So a, a water getting more expensive, I think, is, is a parallel and separate conversation for our next water rate. God forbid, three years when we have to revisit it. But I think that is, that is the barrel of the gun that's directly tied to this.
Okay. Any other, is that it for council discussion? We're good? Okay. City Attorney, if you would read the resolution by title only, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council, a resolution adopting the City of El Segundo's 2020 urban water management plan is ready for adoption.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Pimentel.
Thank you.
Giroux second.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. All right. We're on to item 13, staff presentations. COVID-19 update and to ratify the city manager's amendment to administrative order number one dated June 29, 2021. And we have the South Bay's first female battalion chief broadly in El Segundo, Dina Lee. Thank you for being on. Mr. Mitnick, you want to say any words? Okay. Mrs. Lee, it's up to you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm your acting fire chief, Dina Lee. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve the city in this capacity and I will be delivering the COVID-19 update. I have a few slides and then I will take your questions at the end of the presentation. I'm not sure if we have that loaded up or I can share my screen. I can just see my screen.
Mr. Mitnick just left the chamber, so I'm not sure.
It's on my desktop.
Scott, she's asking for help with the presentation, loading the presentation.
Denise, I mean, Dina?
Yeah.
Can you look at the bottom of your screen? You should see a green button that says share screen. If you put your cursor through on your Zoom, towards the bottom?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Do you see a share screen?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm there.
Okay.
And then I need to go to the, I need to put it on the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you got it. No, go ahead. Let me get it.
Let's do this first.
Okay. Share screen. Okay.
All right, we see it.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, here we have the updated numbers. We have in El Segundo, 905 cases to date. We did have one recent death and that was the first death that we've had since March. So that was unfortunate, but those are the current numbers. The CDC... Yo, we're okay?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. The CDC has released new data that women that are less than 20 weeks pregnant are now cleared to receive the vaccine. And also the CDC has approved a third dose for immunocompromised individuals. And the All-Hazard Incident Management Team has already reached out to Park Vista residents and other members in our community for that third dose. So we are currently working on that now that that is available. The next slide is just showing that the Delta variant is, is the 99% of the cases, all cases right now. It is two to four times as it's more contagious than the original COVID-19. It has more viral load and it's transmitted more easily. The way it was explained to me was that the, it's more in the back of your throat and it's more readily passed from person to person and it is more contagious. There has been a lot of discussion about the breakthrough cases. And so this slide is a good visual, that the green box is actually, the vaccinated depicts the number of vaccinated in LA County. And then you can see that the breakthroughs that are in the purple box, that have tested positive. And then the hospitalized and even less, 55 people have died. And of course, the unvaccinated, of course, are at higher risk for contracting. The new health orders from the state.
I'm, I'm sorry. Did that say 5 million people in LA County have had COVID? Was that the last slide?
These are vaccinated, vaccinated in LA County.
Sorry about that. Keep going.
So 5,000, that 5,092, that's vaccinated. And then out of that 5,000 vaccinated, the purple box, the 21,000 have tested positive. And only 549 out of that 5,000 have been hospitalized and only 55 had, have died. So back to the state, orders coming from the state. They have now mandated for healthcare workers. And this includes the firefighters. And so I'm working closely with city manager, city attorney, HR, and we were gonna, we're gonna start pushing that forward with the mandate. We do have a very low percentage of unvaccinated in the fire department, but we will still be moving forward with that. And the other state mandate is the vaccine verifications for school workers. So that both public and private schools and all state workers either need to show proof of full vaccination or be tested at least once per week. The state is encouraging local governments and other employers to adopt a similar protocol and continue of the multi-pronged strategy to reach communities with low vaccination rates. Now, moving down to the county and city mandates, the LA County Board of Supervisors are still in discussions over the mandates that are coming. So we will discuss that and update that at a further, in the future, council meeting. And you may have seen that Hermosa Beach is starting the mandate for fully vaccinated or testing weekly for those that are, are not being vaccinated. Right now, and I have breaking news from Randy Collins, who is actually out, he was there in desperate need on a bunch of wildfires. So he's out right now. But he just sent me an email that the, the FEMA funding and the state of emergency has been extended by President Biden through December 31st. So we were kind of ramping down the IMT and going through the recovery phase. But we're looking that we may need to possibly ramp back up. There are discussions of a third dose for everyone. The, the studies they're doing now, it's either going to be a third dose or a booster. But the studies that are coming out of Israel and the people that have been through the pandemic, the other countries before, we've been through it, are thinking that we should be getting another third dose eight months after the first two, two vaccines. So stay tuned for updates on that. And all of this, the vaccinations and the testing right now will be fully funded, reimbursed by FEMA through the Incident Management Team. And lastly, these are the current numbers. And I will take your questions at this time.
Counsel, any questions? I just have one. The, what are the plans? How's it evolving, Mark, in terms of the, at the state and county level, requiring employers, require, employers require employees to either vaccinate or provide proof? And have we started thinking about how we're going to handle that?
Well, as far as the state, the state's been really pretty quiet on all COVID-related matters for about 60 days. The county is not, to my knowledge, looking to mandate it for entities other than the county itself as a, as a governmental agency. There are numerous cities in LA County that are looking at the issue of, the cities that are looking at the issue of mandating it for its employees. I've not seen anything, either from the state or the county, about mandating private employers. So I, I think what we're going to see is the public agencies taking on this issue one by one. And we've been monitoring it and the, it's, it's anticipated in the next week or two that the, not CDC, the FDA is going to give final approval of one or more of the vaccines, at which point then as employers, it becomes much clearer, the ability to mandate the vaccines. Because right now, there is just the emergency approval and that's been a bit of an issue. And so when that occurs, I expect that you'll see potentially a lot more private employers mandate it. And we are looking at it as a city and what we will have to do is, we will have to meet and confer with the bargaining units over the issue. They don't have to agree, but we have to meet and confer over the impacts of mandating the vaccines. And then a determination will have to be made to, as to whether to mandate them or not. And we are just starting to really look at this and we're watching what the other agencies are doing. And, but I would expect in the next two to three weeks that there'll be something in front of the council.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Chief Lee, this, this might be, or, or maybe, city manager, maybe you've heard something about it. But has there been any further talk of a central clearinghouse app sort of, or passporting? I know IBM had piloted something with the City of New York somewhat successfully and then somewhat unsuccessfully because there's some HIPAA concerns about it. But is there any sort of architecture that if the county is mandating some sort of proof or looks at mandating proof to go to specific establishments, that there's one central app that they're going to go to or partner with? Or, or create?
The only one that I'm, I mean, the state of Hawaii had a contact and still does, a contact tracing app. New York was, had tried several. I'm not aware of anything in the region in, in LA, but perhaps Chief Lee or, I know that Randy's not available tonight. But I haven't seen any real coordination. I think maybe it was easier for Hawaii just because there's a lot fewer people and it's a smaller area. I don't know. But I know that they were using it for people traveling there. But I have not seen anything here locally.
I mean, I suspect it'd be easier for like Pasadena or Long Beach because they're their own health department and municipality. So they would, they would have access to some sort of verification system. But I just don't know if it was out there. That's all.
Yeah, the, the state does have something. They're building a digital proof of vaccine, but we don't have that yet. And all update, if that becomes available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lee. Well done. Appreciate your leadership on this. Okay. Now, Mr. Mitnick, we also have the administrative order to address. Do you want to give us an overview?
I'm just seeking your ratification of administrative order that I signed off to allow the encroachment permits and, and so on in the various areas of the city, primarily downtown area, to keep that in area, to keep that in place through September thirtieth, to be in sync with the state of California's emergency declaration.
And then, I know we talked about this briefly, but what, beyond that, if it doesn't get extended at the state level, what recourse do we have to continue to do that? Should we desire to do that?
Yeah, good questions. And as your staff, we're working on ways to make that become a reality through the updating of the specific plan for the downtown area. So the bottom line is, we hear and understand the benefits to the business community to do, to do that, to keep it alive. We just have some logistical, technical things to take into consideration, use of the right of way, who's responsible for infrastructure issues, drainage, various right-of-way issues. But we understand the benefits. We're trying to make it become permanent to the extent that it's possible.
Okay, thanks stating your last name. Anyone help you around the dais? Do we have a motion to ratify amendment to administrative order number one addressing extended temporary encroachment permits for restaurants and retail food facilities conducting outdoor dining service in the public right of way to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one?
Jeru so moved.
Okay, great. Trying to move it along here.
Nickel second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you? Yes. There we go. You have Mayor Potem's vote.
Uh, Councilmember Jurut?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Firstak?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Let's see, did we cover everything? Okay, item fourteen, conversion of two-way stop signs to four-way stop signs at the intersection of Hillcrest Street and West Pine Avenue. Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Polk Works Director Elias Sassoon will do this. And we ask the city council to take into consideration the hour in the evening here. So there we go.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council again. I have a very small presentation that I have prepared for this item. So if you would please, Mona, could you please put a copy of that presentation on the screen?
I'm sorry, Elias, I'm gonna need a minute. I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. So I'm gonna need to bring it up. Hold on.
Do you want, let's move on to item fifteen. We have conclusion of the, we'll just come back to this one. Conclusion of the city's technology committee recommendation. And Mr. Mitnick, anything to add here?
Your IT Director, Charles Mallory, is available for presentation if need be.
Okay. I think, I'm sure we all have read the report. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Mallory? No, I don't see any. Okay. Do we have a motion to conclude?
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I just wanted to say thank you to all the members that have served on that committee. And I did make mention to Mr. Mitnick and I, that is, you know, it's a conclusion of a committee, but they spent the time to build bylaws and everything else. Is this the kind of thing that can be put on a shelf and if need be resurrected at some time in the future? Or does it have to be recreated and given birth to again? You know, because there's a lot of work and a lot of hours that were put in by members of that committee to get to where they are today. So it was, I just wanted to make sure of that.
That's a great point. You want to clarify that question, Mr. Mitnick? Is it, we would have to, if we're concluding it, we would have to come as an agenda item, vote on, stand it up again. Is that correct?
Yes, but we understand the desire, the ability to bring it back if need be. But even if you, I've actually seen this before, but as time goes by, the members would move away or move on or whatever, and you'd have to look at filling them. So we get the gist of it. If you, if there's a need to bring this type of committee back, it can be done very quickly.
Yeah, they did a great job. That was established, I think, when Carol and I first got on the council. And all the people involved, probably twenty-five of them collectively, have done a great job, including Chad Hodd, the outgoing chair. So thank you for reminding us, Scott. Okay, do we have a motion to? Oh, Mr. Mallory, did you want to add something?
Yes, I do. You know, if I could, I do want to say that it was a pleasure working with the actual committee. And I'd really like to thank the members for their dedication and their hard work. We have accomplished a lot. And I know this has been a long night. So I just want to just extend that heartfelt thank you to the committee, as well as to council for creating the committee and allowing us to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory.
Their names are listed in the staff report. If you want me to run through them?
Yeah, would you run through them, please, Scott?
All right, so at its inception, Mr. Boils, Ms. Perstek, Lindsay Breeden, Jessica Davis, Toy Davis, Tim Dodd, Todd Felder, David Fromke, Chad Hawn, Brian Howar, Matt Knox, Paul Lanyai, Mike Lipsy, myself, Madeline Smith, and Tom Vannick. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Nickel. I appreciate that. All right, do we have a motion to conclude the committee?
Nickel so moved.
Thank you. Jeru second. Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, if we could do a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Jurut?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Firstak?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes. Thank you. Our back to item fourteen, two-way stop signs to four-way stop signs. And Mr. Sassoon, do we have the presentation ready?
Yes. Mona, have you had the chance to?
Easy on the pen, Elias. The pen did nothing to you. We can go to reports. We can go to reports. I don't think there's anything wrong with going to reports. So come back to it. Okay? So let's go to reports. City Clerk, anything to report this evening?
I do.
All right, thank you.
As we know, the September fourteenth will be a recall election. Everyone should have probably received their ballots by now in the mail. And I just want to let you know that our ballot box is now open for drop-off. The city of El Segundo wasn't selected to host a voting center. So the residents of El Segundo can either mail in their ballots, drop them off in the box, or there's a center located at Dockway or U Center again, Manhattan Beach and the city of Delaware. So those are the spots that our residents can go if they'd like to vote in person. And then if they have any questions, they go to lavote.net, they can call our office, and we will have most information on our website soon.
Madam Clerk, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
And you may not know this answer. If you are in receipt of ballots that are not yours, say, previous owners of your home maybe two decades ago?
Yes.
And you continue to just throw them in the trash when they arrive, what is the proper thing to do? Is there someone that could be made aware that those people no longer live there, that they live out of state?
Sending them back to the county that they no longer live there.
And how would you go about sending them back to the county?
Return to sender.
Return to sender? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is City Treasurer on? Matt? No? Okay. We're gonna go back to item fourteen. Mr. Sassoon, we see your presentation.
Thank you so much. I'm really sorry about the delay. So this is the, this is a couple of slides that I have for the proposed conversion of the two-way stop signs to four-way stop signs at the intersection is Hillcrest Street at West Pine Avenue. Next slide, please. Next slide. Mona? Mona, can you go to the next slide?
Because it's a PDF, you just gotta grab the scroll bar on the right and pull it down.
Elias, we can see it now. Well, I can pinch-hit for the Polk Works Director. So now you see the existing conditions with the stop signs on the east and west direction.
Can I ask you a question? Because the salient issue here is if there's a car parked right next to the E in existing, then that car that's westbound can't see cars that are southbound. So the gajillion-dollar question is, is it better to put stop signs in or to somehow slide that parking space slightly to the north? Because really, that car is the issue.
Councilmember Nickel, I think, might disagree with you on this one. So we're not, we're waiting on Elias. So what, go ahead. What do you want to say?
No, I, this conversation, as it evolves and we start talking about warrants and things like that, I, it always bothers me that it's never taken into account like the width of the roadway or the topography. You know, and like these roads, especially this is deep in the corner of the southwest side of town, right? The oldest portion of town. These roads were originally designed for what? Like a horse and trolley, right? Or a Model T? And so it's, you know, with today's vehicles, well, one, that section of Hillcrest there, you can't drive two cars down that section of Hillcrest with a car parked on the street. Yeah, you gotta pull over the side and wait. And you live on the west side, Mr. Boils, you know all about that, right? And so to Mayor Primantel, Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel's point, if you move it and you do a red zone, you're still not eliminating the fact that that road is very narrow. You put a stop sign there, it solves all the problems. Because even the northbound Hillcrest traffic, they're coming down a very steep decline coming down that hill. And they go to make that turn? Again, West Pine in that section is not very wide. So if there's a car parked there and they go to make that right-hand turn, they can't even necessarily safely make that right-hand turn without potentially crashing into another car that's heading westbound. So if you stop those vehicles before they make that turn, you eliminate the opportunity for that accident to occur. I rest my case.
I want to add one thing. Mr. Mitnick mentioned at lunch today that previous agencies he was with, they would just do a quick survey of the neighbors to make sure that you got what percent?
My experience has been in municipalities, to get these items to be considered, you look at warrants, but you also survey the impacted residents, whatever the distance is, to see if you have a certain level of support for what's being requested. In one municipality, I believe it was a sixty percent threshold. So by the time it came to the council, the council knew that the majority, vast majority of the residents were interested. That's one way to get the feedback, that people actually live there. Do they think it adds value? That was one of the criteria to get it to be concerned, or considered.
Mr. Sassoon, did you, we lost you right here, pretty much on this slide, but.
Sorry?
No, it's okay. We're just addressing.
You want me to go to the next?
Well, yeah, if you would. My apologies. So the next, this is the warrant analysis. This is the summary of what is on the, on the manual, on uniform, traffic control devices, or you know it as MUTCD. So before a four-way stop sign could be installed at the intersection, one of these has to meet. The first one is you got to have at least five reported crashes in a twelve-month period, five crashes. We haven't had any at this intersection. Then the other warrant is the minimum volumes. On the major road, you have to have at least three hundred, three hundred vehicles per hour. And on the minor, you have to have at least two hundred, two hundred vehicles per hour. The, the third one, in case you have an issue with the speed, if people are speeding more than forty miles an hour, then, then those numbers that are above could be reduced by thirty percent. In other words, if you meet seventy percent of the crashes, that means if you have four crashes, you know, four crashes. Or in, in case of the vehicles, seventy percent of three hundred vehicles per hour becomes two hundred and ten vehicles per hour on the major. On the minor, two hundred units per hour becomes hundred and forty hours, if you would. So if you have a speed issue, then the warrant gives you a break on those numbers. And then the last one is if there is no single criterion that is satisfied, all of the above, if eighty percent of the above meets, then, then you can put a four-way stop sign. So what we did is, we did not do a warrant analysis done by a traffic consulting firm. Myself and the staff went at this intersection and they observed the traffic. And we do not believe, frankly, this is gonna meet. The warrant is not gonna meet. Now, I listened to the lady who talked earlier, and she indicated that there are some plants or hedges that obstruct the side visibility. Well, in that scenario, we'd be glad to go out there and take a look at that. And, and we can get with the property owner and get those plants either removed or trimmed. And we've done this before and, and we can do that. But at this time, we either could go for a warrant study or any other action that the city council would like to guide us. I'll be, I'll be a listener.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to put a stop sign, a four-way stop sign at the corner.
Nickel second.
Okay, hold on. Is there any further discussion before we call for the vote?
Oh, this is first one.
Well, again, so what I'm seeing here is that staff is telling us one thing. You have a set of guidelines telling you one thing. And we're just saying, no. With that in mind, I know that most of us have seen online, one of the most, I guess, talked about intersections in this entire city is the problem on Main Street and Maple. Okay, that has not only a stop sign, it has four-way illuminated stop signs. It has stamped pavement saying there's a stop sign coming up. There's a sign before that says a stop sign coming up. You can't do anything more than that, yet that seems to be the biggest problem we have in the city. How is this going to fix this problem? There's no analysis telling you that putting these stop signs in is gonna fix what I don't even know is a problem. When's the last time there was an accident on that road?
We looked for the last two years and we couldn't find any. I don't know if there was any beyond two years, to be honest with you.
My point is, is that if you do it here, you gotta do it, whoever wants to come in and put a stop, you're gonna have stop signs everywhere.
Do you need that stop sign at the corner of your block?
Do I what?
The stop sign at the corner of your street.
It's not a four-way stop.
It is a four-way stop.
Not, what are you talking about, on Palm and Bungalow? No, there isn't. It's two-way.
It's two-way?
Yeah. Palm comes straight down towards Center Street School. So what you have to do is. Palm from, from Eagles Nest, straight into Center Street. It's like a giant slalom. So I'm just saying is that I.
A giant slalom.
I think you start setting a precedent when you do these things. That's all.
So retired cop once told me that stop signs are a suggestion. At the end of the day, a stoplight is a suggestion. You know, it's, it's up to the person driving the car to actually follow the road suggestion so that we all follow the road suggestion and the roads become safe. You know, so to answer your question, will it solve the problem? No. You know, we don't live in that corner of town. We had one resident that does live in that corner of town, has lived in that corner of town for over twenty years, that came and emphatically expressed how it's a no-brainer. I don't know why a stop sign hasn't been there before. It makes no sense to not have a stop sign there. Right? And just the, I get it, the warrants and this conversation lands because you weren't on the, on the dais when a stop sign went in at Sheldon and Walnut. Again, didn't meet the warrants. Now, I may or may not have been the vehicle that jumped off that corner in high school, but it's not a safe corner and it needed a stop sign for a very, very long time. Now, if the high school kids now want to jump that corner, they're gonna have to run the stop sign to do it. Right? Whereas before, they were just jumping free-willed. So I've asked the question here before, do we have a list of all the stop signs in towns that do not meet the warrants? And the answer is, Mr. Hensley?
Not that I'm aware of.
No list? Okay? This corner, if you've ever driven through it, it makes, it makes zero sense for there not to be a stop sign there. And that's why I'm in favor of putting a stop sign there.
Councilmember Nickel, would you entertain an amended motion whereby the only prerequisite is that the residents within, I don't know, three hundred feet or something, did the majority, like sixty percent, agree to the stop sign?
Sure, then we're gonna have to ask a resident to go out there and collect signatures.
Our staff could probably do it, right?
Correct.
So I do drive that intersection every day, almost, actually twice a day. And I can tell you that people coming. can tell you that people coming west or south on Hillcrest, if you're not really paying attention, they come fast and they cut that current corner, and I've seen many misses. So I, twice a day, I use that intersection, and there's, there's no, the only people that drive that area are people that live in the area. So to your point about the Maple intersection, most of the people that run through the Maple intersection do not live in this area. These people live in this area, so if they knew there was a stop sign, they wouldn't be craning, coming down very fast down Hillcrest, going south. So I, that's why I'm in favor of the stop sign. I've seen misses there before, to your point. The street is very small, and you can't see, and it's, so we save a life, you know? Like, what's a stop sign for the people? The only people that are in that area are the people who live there, and I think people there would agree that saving a life is more important than stopping for a couple seconds.
I got to volunteer to get signatures.
So would you accept that amended motion, then?
Sure.
Okay. Would you second that?
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah.
Could you clarify, are we...
The motion is to install a stop, a four-way, make it a four-way from a two-way, assuming that 60% of the residents within, you determined it based on your...
Yeah, let's talk about probably 500 feet or so, maybe longer, but...
500 feet's way too far. It goes under the next block.
Okay, okay.
300 is, is what I hear, 300-foot radius. Okay.
Sir, thank you.
270. 70 it is.
And then while we're talking about the street, I don't, can we make sure that that street has a sign that says, "Not a Through Street, No Beach Access"?
Yes, we could add a sign that says, "No, that is no Through Street."
And no beach access, because there's people that come, that come along, you know?
Sure, be more than happy.
And they think that they're going to get to the beach.
They're still looking for the bridge. It's going to go over.
Be more than happy.
Okay. So Madam Clerk, are you clear, Mr. Mitnick, on the motion, and, and City Clerk?
Yes, sir. 300 feet.
Okay.
I can go back and relax.
We're, we're voting on a motion to install, to convert from two-way to four-way stops, assuming that 60% of the residents within 300 feet of that intersection approve it. Yeah.
Good.
Yes, please.
All right, that was Purstak, and second by Nicol, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicol?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Can we just put a speed bump? Was that unanimous? I wasn't paying attention. Okay. All right, that concludes most of our business. We're on to Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Drew?
Yeah, real quick, I know they're probably in bed right now, but I would like to recognize the El Segundo Little League 9-10 All-Star Team, managed by Mr. Danny Bowley, for winning the Southern California State Championship. I believe that is the first time in the history that an El Segundo Little League team has accomplished that. So I hope we have a chance to recognize them here in person sometime soon. Good job to everyone involved. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Nicol?
I hope that our residents feel the sentiment from this dais as to how we feel about the current conditions from the Hyperion, and that, I want to thank staff for their hard work over this time period. I know that as much as we may have been on a hiatus from public meetings, that the work didn't stop, and if anything, the work was made longer and harder. So Scott, to you and your staff, thank you so much for continuing to work hard and advocate for our residents, because your work has resulted in some reprieve, if little be. I also wanted to mention, and Carol, I hope I'm not taking this from you, Car Show this Saturday, please come down, check it out. If the organizers of the event are implementing any COVID restrictions, please just work with them and be mindful. They're going to do their best to comply with county orders, to have the event go on. That is the 21st this Saturday. The following Saturday, so we got a couple of big Saturdays here in El Segundo. Following Saturday is the El Segundo Art Walk. We approved earlier tonight on the consent calendar to allow the organizers of the art walk to use the parking lot on the corner of Grand and Main Street as a hub, as well as close a portion of Eucalyptus Street for the first time. So their event is the 28th. It's from 3:00 to 9:00 PM, if I recall correctly. Should be fun. They're following up on a one-year hiatus, and instead of doing three events over the course of the summer, we're lopping it into one event. Instead of it being on a Thursday night, it's going to be on a Saturday night. So I also want to thank the Arts and Culture Committee for quickly adjusting their budget to allow for this event to happen this calendar year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicol. All right, we're on to Councilmember Purstak.
Yes, so I just want to remind everyone that the time to submit your reimbursements to the Hyperion has been extended to 8/28, so make sure that you get your reimbursements in, or 26, sorry. And I just want to thank the staff, and especially the Parks and Recs, for putting on the concerts in the park. They have been very, very well-intended, attended, and it's brought a bright spot to our city. And thank you to, you know, the public works also for keeping the parks clean. And after the fact, I, I'm actually quite proud. I walk the park at night with my little dog, and I have to say, every time I walk the park, after the park, after the concerts, the park, they're very, very clean. So thank you to the staff and to everybody for picking up the trash. And I wanted to remind everybody to really pay attention to the two bills, SB 9 and SB 10. They will change this community drastically, and all communities in California, so please reach out to your elected officials to voice your opinion. They, that does work. And then I also want to remind everybody that schools are going back next week, so please drive a little slower, be patient. There's going to be kids, you know, on the streets again, so please pay attention to that, and drive a little slower, and we'll have a great school year.
Thank you, Councilmember Purstak. Mayor Protem Pimentel?
I would only add that SB 9 and SB 10, that's, so, somewhat counterintuitively, it's in front of the Assembly first, because they're existing Senate bills. So Autumn Burke is our Assemblywoman, her office. Robert Pullen Miles is the Chief of Staff. He is also the mayor of Lawndale. So if you want to look those two up, then make contact there. And depending on if it goes back, some sort of reconciliation, then Ben Allen will be our senator. So that's, you're going to look up for that one. Also, please pay attention to the 405, public comment on converting 405's HOV lanes to potential pay-for express lanes. There's also public comment on improvements to the corridor going all the way down to Orange County. They are open to all manner of ideas on both of those, but if people have an opinion, I would urge them to go ahead and voice it, because otherwise, someone will, and their opinion might be different from yours. So those are the only two big items we have. Sanitation stuff meets tomorrow. I would say on sanitation, keep your eyes open to the fact that there is a significant legal settlement for the sanitation. This is county sanitation, significant legal settlement, settlement in the offing between LA County and the city of LA when it comes to that sanitation piece, for which our ratepayers on the east side of PCH will be on the hook. So that is, that could be significant, but more on that to come.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And Councilmember Nicol touched on this. We have been in recess, which means we took three meetings off, but I just want to assure everyone, we have been active and busy nonetheless. And a quick indication of that, I'll speak for all my colleagues in terms of what they've been up to, but I can tell you, for me, can't speak to that, but for me personally, this is any indication of what we've been doing behind the scenes. We had many homeless meetings, including a Homeless Services Task Force meeting with multiple cities. We had a legislative briefing with the South Bay City Council of Government, that Councilman Purstak was on. I facilitated. We had Congressman Liu on there, Senator Feinstein's office, Supervisor Hahn, Assemblymember Burke, and State Senator Allen. We had a, we had coffee, or I'd had a coffee with a Redondo Beach Council member, conducted the Board of Directors meeting for the South Bay City Council of Government as my first meeting as chair. We had a special meeting as a city council. By the way, this is all since we went on recess. We had Chief Whalen's retirement party. We had business visits, including the newest restaurant, Mama D's. We had the Southern Cal Association government meetings, including the Regional Council and the Community Economic Housing Division. I met with the LA Times editor, Sewell Chan, who said that we just built a relationship. He's moved on. I don't know if you guys saw that, but he's going to a new paper. We had, I met with the 2019 Strongman of the Year, Martines, who just moved here with his business partner, Mark, with the new gym on Main Street. They want to do a strongman competition of the world, here in El Segundo, by the way, like towing fire trucks and stuff. I think it's really cool. That's coming up. We had the South Bay City Council of Government Steering Committee and First Strategic Planning Meeting. We met with Redondo, Manhattan Beach, and Hermosa Beach and homelessness. I attended the homeless court in Redondo Beach just 10 days ago. Met with Premier Lacrosse League, which is new to El Segundo and is the only professional lacrosse league in the world that's based here in El Segundo. And we've been working on a city manager and city attorney review. So I just want to remind the public that despite being absent from a few meetings, we continue to work behind the scenes with staff, and these three meetings of recess give the staff time to breathe and prepare. And if you've been paying attention, we've been incredibly busy, and we've gotten a lot accomplished with very long meetings, you know, when we haven't been in recess. So we don't usually do that little download of everything we've been working on, but I wanted the public to know that we have been busy despite being on recess. And I think we covered, city attorney report, then city manager, then we're adjourned.
Thank you, city mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council will follow up, as indicated earlier, on the Hyperion stuff. The next city council meeting, you'll have a special meeting a week from today, on the 24th, I believe, closed session, to talk about labor negotiations for a couple of the unions. In your next regular meeting, we have September 7th. We're still putting the agenda together for that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned at 10:23.